We have seven discussion items on our agenda today and five under Committee Report. With a full agenda, I would like to ask for a focus that on each discussion to allow us to get through the entire agenda. As we transition back to in-person meetings, I would ask the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and public comments. Finally, please be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. Generally, we can use body language, but while we're masked up, I think it might be helpful if we still resort to raising hands to make motions into second. Okay? As this is the first time many of us are in a full Planning Commission meeting in front of the public versus being on WebEx, please acknowledge there you may need to take human breaks at some point. You can get up at any time during the meeting. There's a door right there which will take you to a restroom. We might also, based on what the time is looking like, we might take a small break between old business and new business. We'll just kind of play it by ear. So, we start every meeting with an opportunity for the public to comment on an item which is not contained on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to provide comment today? Seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is a list of requests that can be acted upon in one motion. There are seven items on the consent agenda today. Staff has completed review and delivered the items to the Planning Commission to be deferred to a future meeting. All of these items will return on a future agenda to be discussed fully. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Miller?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Lightman?
Second.
By show of hands, those in favor? Any opposed? No? That motion passes unanimously. Onto the committee report. First item under committee report is Z6020 Lake Wheeler Road. This item was scheduled to be discussed by the Committee of the Whole on August 5, 2021. The August 5 meeting was canceled. The deadline for Planning Commission action is August 23. Staff recommends a 30-day time extension which would extend the Planning Commission review deadline to September 22, 2021. Without objection, I offer a motion to request a 30-day time extension for case Z6020. Do I have a second?
Second.
By show of hands, those in favor of offering a time extension? Any opposed? No? The motion passes unanimously. Next item, item D2Z2021. This second item was also scheduled to be discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting on August 5. Again, this meeting was canceled and the committee did not make any recommendation. As I understand, there is some time sensitivity associated with this case. Without objection, I'd like to pull this case back out of Committee of the Whole and place it on our August 24 Planning Commission meeting. Okay? Seeing no objection. Let's move on to item D3. That's text change TC321. This item was discussed at the June 24 Infrastructure and Mobility Committee meeting. This text change amends the Part 10 Unified Development Ordinance to modify the requirements for provision of bicycle facilities on all avenue-street types for new streets except the sensitive area avenue. The change will relocate in-street conventional bike lanes behind the curb. The committee recommended unanimous approval. However, as I understand from staff, there have been some updates to the ordinance text, so I would like to request a staff presentation focusing on the updates.
Yes, my name is Jason Myers. I'm in the City's Department of Transportation, and I will very briefly go over a few things. So, after that committee meeting, staff received some feedback from members of the DSAC, the Development Services Advisory Commission, I'm sorry, Committee, about a couple different items: the lack of design flexibility, the maintenance of a narrow-planted buffer, the total width of the cross-sections and the corresponding kind of suburban nature, and the lack of a solution for urban districts and the DX district. And so, looking at that feedback and thinking things through, we've provided in your agenda materials an alternate ordinance. So, there's two copies. There's the one you voted on, or the committee voted on, and there's another one that has some changes in it, and this is a summary of those changes. It removes the required utility placement easement from the two-lane undivided, two-lane divided, four-lane divided, and six-lane divided avenues. So, none of these avenues would have a required utility placement easement. Staff's belief is that, given a separated bikeway and the buffer from the street, there's ample distance in the right-of-way to be able to put dry utilities without creating ADA issues or damaging street trees, which are two of the reasons why the utility placement easement was added to the UDO a number of years ago. There's a couple of small tweaks to the wording to increase the flexibility of both the bikeway and the buffer. Almost all of the streetscape elements say a minimum width, and this is consistent with that, so if there's a reason to go wider, you can. And then also, instead of being specifically planted, it's planted or paved. So, it may be that a developer wanted to put a pavement treatment and not have to maintain something, and it might fit in urban design. They would have the flexibility to do that. We've narrowed the median width of the four-lane avenue parallel parking. We've changed the buffer width to be consistently two feet on the non-parallel parking sections, which is an increase for a couple of the higher-order designs, and three feet where there's parallel parking. And three feet's important because of the door distance and stepping in and out. You can't have cycles coming very close to a parked car. And then there's a number of small kind of clarification and type of elimination things in that ordinance. I've put together a quick table just to show for discussion. I'm going to read through this. This is here, the current ordinance, the text change that was voted on by committee, and the alternate with the total width. So, the numbers that are first in this table are right-of-way plus any utility placement easement. And if there's a number in parentheses, that is with just the right-of-way. So, you'll see where those numbers are different. The main takeaway is that the four- and six-lane divided, as well as the two-lane undivided, are actually narrower than current if you account for the utility placement easement coming out of those cross-sections. And in preparing this table, we also realized that both TC3 and the alternate contain an inadvertent expansion of one of these cross-sections, and that the three-lane avenue parallel parking, I am not able to draw anymore. Maybe I drew too much. The three-lane avenue parallel parking, a wider streetscape, a wider sidewalk was put into TC3, and that was not intentional. It should be a 14-foot sidewalk. So, these numbers should actually come down a little bit, but I don't have that in writing for you. That's something that we could correct in going to city council. So, I can answer any questions you have about this, and I think that if I understand correctly, you could vote either one of these ordinances forward to council. You could hold the table for further discussion. You could send it back to committee, and I defer to the planning director, deputy director, to give any more information on the process.
Generally, we do not take public comment during committee reports, but I would just want to do a check to see if there are any members of the public who are interested in speaking on this item.
I have one more thing that I wanted to mention that was part of the feedback was that the TC3 was authorized to amend the avenue cross-sections. Many of our downtown streets are main streets. That is also a cross-section we're using increasingly in other mixed-use districts. And so, we have some ideas on how we could, within the current widths, propose separated bikeways consistent with the sorts of designs. We're not providing that in here. That's something that the Planning Commission or city council could request a text amendment for, but I just want to make sure that it was clear that that was a policy option that we've been thinking about in response to that feedback. Sorry for that.
No worries. Check in to see if members of the public wish to discuss this. Okay, I do see one, two. Okay. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Leave, we use general rules for old business, six minutes for those speaking on the case.
Hello, my name is Mary Sell. My address is 1178 Haynes Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I'm speaking today in support of text change 321, which will provide updates to the cross-sections in our UDO to better account for all ages and abilities biking infrastructure. I work for Oaks &amp; Spokes, the local advocacy organization in place to advance a more sustainable and equitable transportation system, and we strongly support these changes being codified. We know that paint is not protection, and that in order to incent the travel patterns we wish to see locally, we must sufficiently invest in active modes. We are encouraged by work done with staff to address feedback from practitioners in the development space to better account for impacts to site design, and specifically think that the flexibility being warranted in regard to the five-foot utility strip on parcels provides a significant incentive to the development community. Since this utility easement did not allow for buildings or tree plantings prior, this modification essentially provides an additional 10 feet of space across the street cross-section, mitigating impacts from the text change. There may be ability to future reduce setbacks between the building and the sidewalks as well to further decrease the right-of-way impacts. Modifications have also been made by staff after receiving feedback that the two-foot planting strip would be a maintenance burden, allowing for this portion to be used for hardscape like brick instead. Both of these changes help address concerns brought forward by the development community on impacts from this text change, and our organization is committed to continuing to work to identify solutions to ensure these cross-sections are codified. If our community is serious about climate impacts and equity considerations, we must also be serious about how we build our transportation landscape and who it serves. When we only build through vehicle capacity, we're doubling down on one of our largest emissions generators. It is increasingly evident that the status quo is failing us and failing future generations. We must build a better way, and this text change allows for significant progress in reaching our transportation equity and climate-related goals, and we hope to see Planning Commission work quickly for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sell.
Good morning. My name is Dwight Otwell. I'm the current Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Thanks for having us here this morning. We have been working on this text change with the transportation planning staff for the past three or four years, and we are very excited to see this finally get codified. Looking forward to moving this forward. We received the comments from DSAC earlier this month, and honestly, we share a lot of those concerns. They have brought up some very important points. We had a really productive meeting earlier this week, and I think that some of the amendments that staff has come up with to narrow the right-of-way and increase flexibility address the most pressing concerns. And so, we, the position of BPAC, is we would like to see this text change move forward at this point. We are dedicated to working with staff and with DSAC on working out any additional details that need to be addressed before it gets to council. I will say that currently, under the existing UDO, when redevelopment happens, we get an in-lane, in-road bike lane, which is a substandard facility. If this text change does not move forward, that's what we will continue to get. And I will perfectly candid that the UDO text change does provide some challenges for developers that would need to implement this street section, but there is relief available through the adjustment process. And I realize that's not ideal, but it's workable in the short term until we can get this policy fixed. So, I would urge the passage of this text change and bring this to city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Otwell.
Hi, I'm Ann Stoddard. I'm the Director of Development for Grub Ventures at 3700 Glenwood Avenue, Raleigh 27612. But I am here representing the Development Services Advisory Committee, or DSAC, as its co-chair to express our concerns about TC321. First, I want to express our gratitude to the leaders of the biking community for their work for many years to bring this text change before you. We, like they, want safe streets for bikers of all ages. We spent an hour on Zoom yesterday and found a lot of common ground in our discussion, as Mr. Otwell mentioned, and we look forward to continuing that discussion. Here's the big picture of DSAC's concerns. While the staff has made adjustments to the street sections, every one of the proposed street sections adds at least five feet or more to the city's right-of-way. And I'd be curious to know how many miles of roadway are included in these mandatory street sections, since the amount of developable land being taken out of the tax base is likely a significant number. I appreciate the staff's proposal to eliminate the UPE adjacent to these sections, but it doesn't change DSAC's point because the UPE has always been a requirement placed on private property rather than in the public right-of-way, just to make sure everybody's clear on that. In addition, DSAC has prepared a street section which we believe addresses all of the bicycle community's goals. We
...planted buffer, the total width of the cross-sections and the corresponding kind of suburban nature, and the lack of a solution for urban districts and the DX district. And so, looking at that feedback and thinking things through, we've provided in your agenda materials an alternate ordinance. So, there's two copies. There's the one you voted on and the or the committee voted on, and there's another one that has some changes in it, and this is a summary of those changes. It removes the required utility placement easement from the two-lane undivided, two-lane divided, four-lane divided, and six-lane divided avenues. So, none of these avenues would have a required utility placement easement. Staff's belief is that, given a separated bikeway and the buffer from the street, there's ample distance in the right-of-way to be able to put dry utilities without creating ADA issues or damaging street trees, which are two of the reasons why the utility placement easement was added to the UDO a number of years ago. There's a couple of small tweaks to the wording to increase the flexibility of both the bikeway and the buffer. Almost all of the streetscape elements say a minimum width, and this is consistent with that. So, if there's a reason to go wider, you can. And then also, instead of being specifically planted, it's planted or paved. So, it may be that a developer wanted to put a paved treatment and not have to maintain something, and it might fit in urban design. They would have the flexibility to do that. We've narrowed the median width of the four-lane avenue parallel parking. We've changed the buffer width to be consistently two feet on the non-parallel parking sections, which is an increase for a couple of the higher-order designs, and three feet where there's parallel parking. And three feet's important because of the door distance and stepping in and out. You can't have cycles coming very close to a parked car. And then there's a number of small kind of clarification and type of elimination things in that ordinance. I've put together a quick table just to show for discussion. I'm going to read through this. This is here, the current ordinance, the text change that was voted on by committee, and the alternate with the total width. So, the numbers that are first in this table are right-of-way plus any utility placement easement. And if there's a number in parentheses, that is with the just the right-of-way. So, you'll see where those numbers are different. The main takeaway is that the four- and six-lane divided, as well as the two-lane undivided, are actually narrower than current if you account for the utility placement easement coming out of those cross-sections. And in preparing this table, we also realized that both TC3 and the alternate contain an inadvertent expansion of one of these cross-sections, and that the three-lane avenue parallel parking, I am not able to draw anymore. Maybe I drew too much. The three-lane avenue parallel parking, a wider streetscape, a wider sidewalk was put into TC3, and that was not intentional. It should be a 14-foot sidewalk. So, these numbers should actually come down a little bit, but I don't have that in writing for you. That's something that we could correct in going to city council. So, I can answer any questions you have about this, and I think that if I understand correctly, you could vote either one of these ordinances forward to council. You could hold the table for further discussion. You could send it back to committee, and I defer to the planning director, deputy director, to give any more information on the process.
Generally, we do not take public comment during committee reports, but I would just want to do a check to see if there are any members of the public who are interested in speaking on this item.
I have one more thing that I wanted to mention. That was part of the feedback was that the TC3 was authorized to amend the avenue cross-sections. Many of our downtown streets are main streets. That is also a cross-section we're using increasingly in other mixed-use districts. And so, we have some ideas on how we could, within the current widths, propose separated bikeways consistent with the sorts of designs. We're not providing that in here. That's something that the planning commission or city council could request a text amendment for, but I just want to make sure that it was clear that that was a policy option that we've been thinking about in response to that feedback. Sorry for that.
No worries. Check in to see if members of the public wish to discuss this. Okay, I do see one, two. Okay. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Leave, we use general rules for old business, six minutes for those speaking on the case.
Hello. My name is Mary Sell. My address is 1178 Hayne Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I'm speaking today in support of text change 321, which will provide updates to the cross-sections in our UDO to better account for all ages and abilities biking infrastructure. I work for Oaks and Spokes, the local advocacy organization in place to advance a more sustainable and equitable transportation system, and we strongly support these changes being codified. We know that paint is not protection, and that in order to incent the travel patterns we wish to see locally, we must sufficiently invest in active modes. We are encouraged by work done with staff to address feedback from practitioners in the development space to better account for impacts to site design, and specifically think that the flexibility being warranted in regard to the five-foot utility strip on parcels provides a significant incentive to the development community. Since this utility easement did not allow for buildings or tree plantings prior, this modification essentially provides an additional 10 feet of space across the street cross-section, mitigating impacts from the text change. There may be ability to future reduce setbacks between the building and the sidewalks as well to further decrease the right-of-way impacts. Modifications have also been made by staff after receiving feedback that the two-foot planting strip would be a maintenance burden, allowing for this portion to be used for hardscape like brick instead. Both of these changes help address concerns brought forward by the development community on impacts from this text change, and our organization is committed to continuing to work to identify solutions to ensure these cross-sections are codified. If our community is serious about climate impacts and equity considerations, we must also be serious about how we build our transportation landscape and who it serves. When we only build through vehicle capacity, we're doubling down on one of our largest emissions generators. It is increasingly evident that the status quo is failing us and failing future generations. We must build a better way, and this text change allows for significant progress in reaching our transportation equity and climate-related goals, and we hope to see planning commission work quickly for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sell.
Good morning. My name is Dwight Otwell. I'm the current chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Thanks for having us here this morning. We have been working on this text change with the transportation planning staff for the past three or four years, and we are very excited to see this finally get codified. Looking forward to moving this forward. We received the comments from DSAC earlier this month, and honestly, we share a lot of those concerns. They have brought up some very important points. We had a really productive meeting earlier this week, and I think that some of the amendments that staff has come up with to narrow the right-of-way and increase flexibility address the most pressing concerns. And so, we, the position of BPAC is we would like to see this text change move forward at this point. We are dedicated to working with staff and with DSAC on working out any additional details that need to be addressed before it gets to council. I will say that currently, under the existing UDO, when redevelopment happens, we get an in-lane, in-road bike lane, which is a substandard facility. If this text change does not move forward, that's what we will continue to get. And I will perfectly candid that the UDO text change does provide some challenges for developers that would need to implement this street section, but there is relief available through the adjustment process. And I realize that's not ideal, but it's workable in the short term until we can get this policy fixed. So, I would urge the passage of this text change and bring this to city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Otwell.
Oops. Hi, I'm Anne Stoddard. I'm the Director of Development for Grub Ventures at 3700 Glenwood Avenue, Raleigh 27612. But I am here representing the Development Services Advisory Committee, or DSAC, as its co-chair to express our concerns about TC 321. First, I want to express our gratitude to the leaders of the biking community for their work for many years to bring this text change before you. We, like they, want safe streets for bikers of all ages. We spent an hour on Zoom yesterday and found a lot of common ground in our discussion, as Mr. Otwell mentioned, and we look forward to continuing that discussion. Here's the big picture of DSAC's concerns. While the staff has made adjustments to the street sections, every one of the proposed street sections adds at least five feet or more to the city's right-of-way. And I'd be curious to know how many miles of roadway are included in these mandatory street sections, since the amount of developable land being taken out of the tax base is likely a significant number. I appreciate the staff's proposal to eliminate the UPE adjacent to these sections, but it doesn't change DSAC's point because the UPE has always been a requirement placed on private property rather than in the public right-of-way, just to make sure everybody's clear on that. In addition, DSAC has prepared a street section which we believe addresses all of the bicycle community's goals, and also stays within the existing, in the case that I developed 64-foot right-of-way for two-lane avenue undivided. Where am I? We see no need to expand the street section and a significant detriment to the tax base in the city. Second big point is the complete streets implementation is one of the comp plan goals, and a plan that can't be implemented isn't a plan. City staff has made some good starts by addressing a few of the comments that we did make, but the comments offered by our members of the design and engineering community demonstrate that, as drafted, this text change is not sufficiently flexible to address the various contexts, topographies, and connections to existing street sections. This is not ready for primetime. Review staff needs greater flexibility to avoid having every submittal head to the Appearance Commission or the Board of Adjustment. And DSAC suggests that we use UDO Section 8.4.1.F regarding non-conforming street sections as a guide. And I guess I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. Are there any other members of the public who wish to give comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open it up to commissioners for questions or comments. Do I have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Reins.
Thanks, Chair Fox. Personally, I'm a bike commuter and road cyclist, mountain biker, all of that. So, I really appreciate text change, kind of taking the lead and looking at better safety for cyclists in this, in this city. The main question I have is how we deal with intersections. I understand the cross-section and the alternate cross-sections. I don't really have any questions or objections to those for safety, but I want to know from staff how we can, what does an intersection look like where a two-lane maybe touches another street that doesn't have the same requirements, or where they have the same requirements at that intersection? Has there been some studies done on that?
Yeah, and the city is actually developing a couple of capital projects built on very similar cross-sections that have to and are addressing that issue. The field of bicycle facility design is very rapidly evolving in a lot of ways, and one of the treatments that's often used in other countries is what is now known in the US as a protected intersection. And what that does is taking advantage of the buffer space helps create a more right-angle crossing of a right-turning vehicle or motor vehicle, and a cyclist is continuing straight to help reduce the risk of a right-hook. You know, one of the dangerous crashes is somebody passes a cyclist, doesn't know that they're right there in their blind spot, turns right, and they go right into each other. The city is implementing a protected intersection, intersection of Reedy Creek and Blue Ridge Road, which has this sort of three-foot buffer bike lane on one side in one direction and bicycle lanes on the other side, and there'll be some small expansions of that. And there's the ability to kind of come into that intersection from all sides, even where there is no bikeway, and have that kind of, and in general, I will now maybe draw on the top of this really briefly. So, normally, in a kind of vehicular cyclist, you're taught to merge over and turn left. And that merge is something most people are not comfortable doing on a bike. In a protected intersection, you've got to go around the whole thing and are protected from right-turns here by the nature of the intersection, and you'd use a different signal phase to cross with the light when you're going across. So, the city is installing that at Blue Ridge and Reedy Creek. That project is nearing the end of its design phase, and we are also doing that sort of treatment on Six Forks Road as a project, in a project that is just starting the design phase, and that would be from Rowan to Lynn Road. And I don't know the number of protected intersections that are in that project off the top of my head, but it's all of the signalized intersections will have that rough configuration. Having separate bikes from pedestrians helps facilitate that design where multi-use paths are really just crosswalks and intersections, and can create some conflicts with ADA users and cyclists in the same space. Does that answer your questions, sir?
It does, but there may be impacts to the corners for any private landowners in terms of space allocation that they can use, because it may creep into that property.
Not necessarily. The, by having that extra buffer space, helps create the opportunity to do this sort of thing. It may be that in a more constrained space with the right-of-way, that the sidewalk doesn't stay to be a full 14-foot all the way around the corner and every side. I've seen that situation come up a little bit, and it does certainly slow turning vehicles down quite a bit, and you need to have a different design to handle, to accommodate large vehicles like trucks and buses than what we usually do.
Do we have any additional questions from commission members?
Not a question, but a comment. I wanted to thank everyone for their work on this. I'm excited about this text change and glad to hear that our bike lane community is in favor of this. I am curious to see Ms. Stoddard's and DSAC's additional comments and proposals that they have with respect to furthering the policy goals of the bike lane community, and also if there's a way to meet in the middle with DSAC, I am curious to see those options. So, I would, I'm in favor of holding this and taking a look at what those proposals are personally.
Agreed. Given the alternative proposal that's on the table and some of the comments we've heard today, without objection, I'm going to have us move this item to one of our next full planning commission meetings under Old Business, if that's acceptable.
Can we get a clarification as to the deadline for action?
I believe it's August 23rd. We may need a 30-day.
Correct, yeah. If you'd like to hold it or move it to another committee, you would need to request a time extension.
Okay.
Chair Fox, sorry. If I could ask a couple of questions as well, so that we can address these at the next meeting.
Excellent. Go right ahead, and then we'll make the motion for a time extension.
And I think if y'all recall, when this was in text change, I made the comment about the additional right-of-way, and I voted it out, saying I know this issue is going to come up, and reserve the right to be able to hold and talk about that. So, I think I agree with Commissioner Miller. I'd like to see some of those alternatives. Jason also mentioned that there were some ideas for the main street, so I'd like to see those as well. And I am concerned about the design flexibility and sort of the one-size-fits-all and what the impacts are to some of the existing conditions and the tight corridors. I understand Mr. Otwell mentioned the design adjustment process, but again, as someone who goes through that process regularly, through ASR, SPR, Board of Adjustment, Design Adjustment, Appearance Commission, I feel like there needs to be a little bit of flexibility, at least some considerations about that, and I'd like to have a little bit more discussion around that. And then lastly, I'm just curious, the plan on how this is going to be implemented? If it's, if it's new ASRs, are there certain corridors that we focus on? Again, my concern is sort of this idea about the sidewalk-to-nowhere phenomenon, where we're coming in and we're building bike lanes that you then kick back out into the street, and you kick back out, and there's issues that developers have, or someone's building the, obviously, the sort of the better mousetrap, but then the rest of the corridor sits there for 10 years, and you've got this one section. So, I'm just curious about sort of how that, all that's influenced. Certainly, want to go on the record to say I'm 100% in favor of this. I think we all understand the importance of it. I think there needs to be some additional considerations and discussions before we move it out.
Okay, excellent. Any further comment?
We have a text change committee meeting next week. Would you want to get a question?
We could pull it to text change, move it back. I believe we still need the time extension for 30 days, so we may as well just leave it if that's going to work. Okay, to summarize some of the comments from the commission members, we would like some additional information about the impact of requiring additional right-of-way, seeing the DSAC alternative that was mentioned, options for main street implementation in downtown, what the thinking is behind that currently, additional information regarding design flexibility, and plans on how to implement this in the future. With that, I will make a motion for a 30-day time extension and to move this to our next full planning commission meeting. Second. We have a motion for the 30-day time extension from myself, Commissioner Fox, and a second by Commissioner Miller. By show of hands, all of those in favor of the 30-day time extension? Any opposed? No, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next item under committee report, that's item D4, text change TC 721, DX digital signage. This is a text change to amend Part 10 of the Unified Development Ordinance to create a new special sign type called DX digital signs that employs technologies such as LCD, LED, and projection to display content such as digital images, video streaming media, and information. Committee of the whole voted unanimously to approve this at their meeting on June 24th. Do we have any additional questions or discussion from the commission members? With that, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Reins?
Yes, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated August 10, 2021, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Reins. We have a motion on the table. Commissioner Reins, do I have a second? Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on the merits of the motion? No. By show of hands, all of those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? No, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, item D5, text change TC 1320, NX outdoor bar seating. This text change amends Part 10 of the Unified Development Ordinance to modify outdoor seating regulations for bars, nightclubs, taverns, or lounges in the NX zoning district. I will ask for a summary and potentially a motion from Commissioner O'Haver, who chaired that committee meeting.
Let me pull that up real quick. So, we, so I had the pleasure of chairing that committee, thanks to Ms. Miller not being able to attend, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And so, let's see. Trying to find my notes on it. What do I need to do, Chair Fox?
If you-
Give a debrief?
Sure, give a quick debrief, any discussion items, and then one might rely on the backup material for the consistency statement.
Okay, got it. Just had to find it there. So, this text change affects Chapter 6 of the UDO. Currently, bar is a special use in NX. I believe Keegan mentioned that the definition for bar is defined as 70% of sales, otherwise it's a restaurant, considered a restaurant use. This text change is increasing the seating from eight to 20 total seats. There were a set of impact considerations that staff went through that they are mitigating with this text change, sound impacts, light impacts. And we identify that currently there are eight existing establishments that would be impacted by this text change. And lastly, this is on private property only. It's not, it's not on the pups. It's not the private use of public spaces. And I believe we voted it out unanimously with approval. So, that's my, hopefully y'all could hear that.
That was good. Is there any additional discussion or questions from commission members regarding this text change?
With that, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated August 10, 2021, contained in the agenda materials, to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment TC 1320, NX outdoor bar seating. After considering the policies and materials included as part of the comprehensive plan, the planning commission determines that the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the comp plan and other adopted plans, and should be approved. The following policy statements contained in the 2030 comprehensive plan have been considered relevant. LU 5.2, managing commercial development impacts. LU 5.5, transitional and buffered districts. LU 5.6, buffering requirements. And I'm not going to read any more because my glasses are foggy.
We are going to take that as an acceptable motion. On the table from Commissioner O'Haver, do I have a second? Commissioner Reins? Okay. Motion from Commissioner O'Haver, a second by Commissioner Reins. By show of hands, how many are in support of the approval of TC 1320? Okay, no. And any opposed? No. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, folks. Good job, even with the fogging lenses. I feel your pain. Okay. That completes committee reports. Onto Old Business. There are two items listed under Old Business portion of the agenda. These requests were previously discussed at earlier meetings. They have to get in the Wayback Machine to remember those. Both items were deferred to allow applicants to have additional conversations with neighbors and to offer revised conditions. The first case for discussion is item E1, case number Z6720, at 3249 Blue Ridge Road. This is a request to rezone approximately 3.95 acres from R4 to Office Mixed Use 3, parking limited with conditions. This request was discussed at the May 27 Transportation Committee, now Infrastructure and Mobility Committee meeting, where the committee voted to refer the case out with no recommendation to allow the applicant time to revise conditions. Since that time, the applicant has revised conditions to increase the setback at the rear property line, reduce hours of operations, require full cutoff lights near Blue Ridge Road, and require a planted buffer near the rear property line. I'd like to ask for a brief update from staff, focusing on the changes to the application since our last discussion.
If it's okay, Chair Fox, I'd like to recuse myself from this case. I live right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Without objection, Commissioner Lampman is recused from case number Z6720.
Good morning. As was mentioned, the applicant has revised the zoning conditions since this case was last discussed. The changes are underlined here. Condition 2 was clarified to refer to all non-residential uses combined. Condition 3, the setback to the rear property line was extended from 50 feet to 100 feet. Condition 4, the hours of operation were reduced, so now it's between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And then, condition 5 was extended so that full cutoff light fixtures are also required between a building and Blue Ridge Road, and shall be directed away from Blue Ridge Road. And then, condition 6 was added. This condition establishes a planted buffer, 15-foot with planted buffer, that's located near the rear property boundary, and specifies the plantings that are required in that area. There's also an exhibit associated with this condition. The hatched area shows the range where the buffer could begin. So, proposed an existing zoning. Nothing has changed since this was last discussed. The conditions do limit the non-residential use per the conditions, and the comprehensive plan analysis also remained the same. So, the OX district is consistent with the future land use map designation of institutional. The parking limited frontage is consistent with the transit emphasis corridor designation along Blue Ridge Road, and the case is consistent overall. As a reminder, these are the consistent policies relating to managing commercial impacts, compact development, additional housing entitlement, and appropriate frontage. And then, a few inconsistent policies remain relating to the size and massing of the development that could be built under this district. Your deadline is August 20th, and that falls before your next regularly scheduled meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rickow. We have already heard from the applicant and members of the public, and received a number of emails from neighbors in the vicinity. I do want to check by show of hands, how many members in the audience are here to speak on this item? Without objection- Without objection, I'd like to allow six minutes total to the applicant and those in support, and then also six minutes total to those in opposition. Would the applicant or anyone here to speak and support like to come forward?
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners. I'm joined by Patrick Faulkner of the Keith Corporation, the rezoning applicant, and Rick Baker with Timmons Group. As Hannah mentioned, this is a rezoning to rezone the property or a portion of 3249 Blue Ridge Road from R4 to OX3 PLCU in order to construct a medical office building. We have, since our last meeting at Transportation Committee, we've met with neighbors across Blue Ridge Road. We've continued our discussions with the Edwards Mill Townhome community, and we believe that based on the updated conditions that we can present today, that this case is reasonable and in the public interest. So Hannah showed the overview of the slides. I won't be repetitive from what she has already showed, but I will make note that this rezoning is consistent with the future land use map. The parking limited frontage is consistent with the urban form map. The rezoning itself is compatible with the surrounding area. We're a quarter of a mile from Rex Hospital, and there are a variety of medical and office uses within walking distance of this site. This is a concept plan that I believe that we showed at the Transportation Meeting. Outside of the conditions, I do want to note in this area here, outside of where we anticipate tree conservation, this is an area that the Edwards Mill Townhome community has used as a walking trail, erected gazebos, and we are working with them to grant them an access easement, to continue use of that area for recreational purposes. And we'll also create a planning agreement to, you know, enhance the buffer area there with mature shrubs, just to make sure that any site impacts that they have through the TCA to the parking lot or the building is mitigated. So the red text here are the conditions that we have updated since meeting with the Blue Ridge Road neighbors and continuing discussions with the Edwards Mill Townhome community. The additional prohibited uses were a result of the conversations we had with the Blue Ridge Road neighbors. We've extended our minimum building setback from the shared property line with the Edwards Mill Townhomes from 50 feet to 100 feet. We've reduced our hours of operation on the site to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., whereas it was 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. originally. We've included the same cutoff lighting design for the Blue Ridge Road neighbors as we had done for the Edwards Mill Townhome neighbors. And this last condition here is, relates to the buffering to the back of the property to Edwards Mill Townhomes. Now, this only applies if the area is not to be designated as tree conservation area. Rick Baker with Timmons Group has performed a pretty extensive tree survey, not only of our site, but of the Summit Church property in general, and we are very confident that this area will be designated as TCA and that this buffer condition won't apply. What that means is that they'll have an even greater buffer than what is shown on this condition today. And just to conclude, the request is consistent both with the future land use map, urban form map, and with the comprehensive plan overall. We're continuing to work with our neighbors, not only with zoning conditions, but those agreements that we can make outside of the zoning process, and we're trying to be good neighbors in that regard. As Hannah's presentation pointed out, these additional conditions have further supported consistency with Land Use Plan 5.2, Managing Commercial Development Impacts. And for these reasons, we believe that the request is reasonable and in the public interest, and we ask the Planning Commission to recommend approval. The three of us are here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Can we now hear from members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? As we transition, I'll just remind members of the public to state your name and your address for the record. If anyone at any point has a hard time understanding any of the Commission members speaking with masks on, please do not hesitate to raise your hand as we are all struggling in this moment together. Those of us who often rely on reading lips are struggling exponentially.
I'm Jerry Miller, 3325 Talke Place. I'm waiting on my slides.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good morning. Since we're waiting on her slides, I'd like to speak on behalf of the Edwards Mill Townhomes. My name is Hayes Finley, and I'm with the law firm Fox Rothschild, here on behalf of Edwards Mill Townhomes, whose mailing address is 4112 Blue Ridge Road, Suite 100, Raleigh and C27612. As Mr. Mills said, our community shares a property line on the back of the property being rezoned, and we have had several meetings with the developers. We are very appreciative of their willingness to hear us out and propose conditions to address those concerns, those in the conditions, as Mr. Mills said, and those commitments outside of the zoning conditions. We have, however, been a little disappointed with the communication as resulted in some conditions having to be resubmitted or amended. For example, we were not given an opportunity to review this list of conditions before the deadline, and we have talked to them about this buffer, additional buffer, the number six zoning condition, which offers the alternative to the tree conservation area, that they are proposing a 15-foot wide buffer. We've asked them to increase that to 50 feet, which they have told us that they agree to, although they did not mention that in their presentation just now. So we are assuming that they will, at some point, hopefully, amend that condition when the time is appropriate to do so, to increase that buffer to 50 feet. Then we would support these conditions. Other than that, we are very appreciative of their willingness to plant additional trees along the back of the property line and grant us an access easement. We would prefer to have those plantings have been a condition, but we are willing to accept their commitment to do so, and they have told you that tonight, today, this morning. So, those are our concerns, are just reducing the impact of the sightlines to our property and our ability to enjoy that tree buffer. And as long as they follow through on amending that condition, we do support. So I will leave.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm here today to represent about 300 citizens who have filed an electronic petition that we have and another 35 residents of Blue Ridge Road, which circulated a paper petition because they're older and they feel like their voices are not being heard in this process. So I'd like to talk about some bigger picture items for you today. I need to figure out how to advance these slides. Let's see. Okay. And let me make it a little screen. I think everyone's familiar with the icon, which is the shimmer wall downtown by Thomas Sear. What you may not know is that this shimmer wall is actually based on an actual tree in Raleigh that was in Oakwood Cemetery for many, many years. They extracted a section and made it into this wall, and this tree met an untimely demise by a storm. We have an opportunity here with a beautiful tree on, if I can figure out how to do this, on Blue Ridge Road. With a beautiful tree on this property, toward the front of this property, you've heard a lot today about negotiations with attorneys, et cetera, for the back of the property. And the voices there of that townhome association have been heard. The voices of the people who use this and live in the area, who want to protect this tree, have not been heard. And there are two large oaks nearby, which are in an ordinance to be actively protected on a lot about a tenth mile away. There's nothing. Everyone's been silent on this, including in the staff report, and the neighbors have brought this up from the earliest days since last October and have simply not been heard. Next, this is about a two-mile stretch. We call it the Blue Ridge Residential Corridor. It goes from Rex Hospital down to Crabtree Valley Mall, and it's primarily all residences, a wide range, low density, high density, very high-end properties, some less expensive properties, renters, et cetera. It is a residential space, and what they're proposing to do is to put an incompatible 50-foot-high medical building in the middle of this space. There isn't adjacent commercial building. It's one-story high and very compatible with a neighborhood. Part of what's extra egregious here is this is a ridge. It's the Blue Ridge. And so you can see 447 feet is the height of that property on this topographic map. What's in like orange and yellow and green, those are lower-level properties. So even the people who live across the street, these older residents of Blue Ridge Road, are below the level of this property. If it's a 50-foot-high medical building, there are many nearby homes that are going to be almost 70 feet, looking up at this thing, it's almost 70 feet higher than them. It's simply incompatible and doesn't fit for infill for that reason as well. Next, we have a well-established arena Blue Ridge area in the 2030 comp plan. We have a health and wellness district, which you see here in green. There's the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance, there's city and state, my tax dollars, developer money, that's all working on smart growth in the Blue Ridge Corridor. There's a health and wellness district that's well-established, and then you can see that bright red star, that's where this medical building is proposed. And in fact, it's the Wake Internal Medicine Consultants who are located in that green area in an old building, who want to push down the hill into our residential neighborhood with their new development. And it really doesn't make sense. Next, a single medical building, 50 feet high, just sitting there by itself, does not meet the city definition of institutional. We disagree with the staff report in that regard, that it's consistent. If it were a huge medical complex, if it were a large university, it's simply 2030 said this should be institutional, assuming church or something similar, not a single medical office building, so we disagree with that logic. Finally, the policies that are recognized as inconsistent that Hannah raised are those that really have the greatest impact on livability. We have a very large building. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. If you'd like to just finish your thought, I'll allow you to go ahead and do so without objection.
Thank you, this is my final slide. You know, a very large building put in the middle of a residential area. Someone mentioned the word spot zoning. I'm not sure what that means exactly, but it just, to everyone who signed our petitions and everyone who uses that area, it feels incompatible, inconsistent, and it's going to decrease our livability and the safety as well of the neighbors who use that street regularly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any additional members of the public who'd like to speak? No? I, would you like to speak? Okay. Applicant team, I would ask first, could you address the question regarding the 50-foot buffer?
Yes. So when I spoke with Ms. Finley about the type of buffer that they wanted, she had asked for a type C2 buffer, which is generally 15 feet wide. When we brought those conditions, they had asked to extend it to 50, and that's totally fine with us, but that's not considered a technical correction to zoning conditions. So while we can offer that as a, you know, a future condition, and we happily will, we weren't able to change it in time for today's hearing. So we're working with planning staff to determine the most appropriate time to make that change to 50 feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I was just going to ask if there, before any questions, if Patrick Faulkner could use our remaining time just to speak to the Commission? If that's okay? Thank you.
Put the remaining time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just, my name's Patrick Faulkner. I'm with the Keith Corporation, and very briefly, just want to thank you all for listening to our case today. As was discussed in the subcommittee meeting, this is a very difficult site to develop. I believe there's been three attempts, to my knowledge, to try to develop this site. The way the parcel was originally two different parcels, and the church recombined them. We had some block and sub-street issues, tree conservation. The church was developed prior to tree conservation ordinance that is now in effect. Buffers on the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance, neighbors on both sides, parking height requirements. It's a challenge, and we've tried very hard to listen to everybody. We have made concessions where we could. We listened to the neighbors across the street and revised four of our conditions, and we recognize that it's a very challenging site. We are trying to do the best that we can to accommodate all different sides, and we appreciate your listening to us today and considering our request.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up for questions and comments from Commissioners, and I also saw Mr. Bauer might have a comment.
No, I was just checking on, if you wish to see a condition added for a 50-foot landscape buffer, then your options are to request a time extension, hold this item, have it at a subsequent meeting. Your only other option is to report it out. Without that, hope the council requests it. If they were to request it, since it cannot be added between your report and going to the council meeting, go to the council on August 17. They would have to hold it to their first meeting in September, which probably, but both outcomes, the likely outcome is that this gets scheduled for an October public hearing. So there's really no advantage to the applicant to sending it out to the city council if your desire is to see this condition amended.
Okay, thank you. Commission members, questions or comments? Commissioner O'Haver, I believe you have a question?
If it's okay, can I ask the applicant to walk back through the walking trail, sort of those dimensions, the buffer, what they're maintaining for the neighbors, what the neighbors are asking for? I just, I generally know, but I'd like to just see that again, if y'all will entertain me that.
Absolutely. So, there is an area between our existing tree canopy, which you can sort of see with the rounded-off lines there, and our boundary line. It's about, I think, just on the site plan there, 10,376 square feet. And that area has been, there's a dirt walking trail, I think there's three or four gazebos, maybe a swing kind of in this area somewhere. But there is- But there was never a formal agreement between the Edwards Mill Townhomes and the property owner. I'm not sure if it was, I think it was the church when this, when the gazebos were put in place. And so we wanted to memorialize that and record that easement so that they had, you know, a continuing use of that area. And we have committed to drafting a planting agreement that would concern somewhere in this area, in the lower, the lower section, in order to connect to sewer. We're gonna have to come right through here to an existing manhole on the Edwards Mill Townhome property. And so there will be some amount of tree clearing to get to there. I think those easements are typically 20 feet wide, but in order to mitigate that and to prevent, you know, any type of clear sight into the parking lot, I don't think it would be to the building, I think it would be more to the parking lot based on the angle. But we would plant trees, or, excuse me, we would plant like mature shrubs in the easement area to mitigate, you know, those, that siding of any parking lot or any site features like that. And those are both being discussed kind of outside of the zoning parameters and process.
And so where is the 50-foot buffer versus the 15-foot buffer, and what's the width of that roughly? Now, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, you're dealing that portion with the walking trails. Are you starting the buffer at the edge of that easement and coming in 15 feet or 50 feet? Are you doing it from the property line? And what's existing now?
Right. So you can sort of see from this exhibit the existing canopy line and how it snakes a little bit in and out. And so what this buffer condition would do, and again, we are committed to extending it to 50 feet, from more or less these townhomes that run parallel with the boundary line, we would create a buffer that could start anywhere from 20 feet to 40 feet from the boundary line, which lines up with the existing canopy line that you see today. I'll note again that the tree surveys that we've conducted lead us to believe with pretty good confidence that the, this, let's see, that this entire area shaded in that darker color will be designated as TCA for us to get to 10%. And so while the buffer condition is good and we are willing to change that, I think practically speaking, the outcome's gonna be a bigger buffer than the condition shows.
I agree, yes. I just wanted to clarify, it was a timing issue to get all the trees surveyed so that we could understand what our tree conservation effort was, which included trees on the church parcel. So Ms. Hayes is correct, we did, there was a delay in communication, but it is a balancing act with what we could grant. On one side, the townhomes are encroaching into our property over 20 feet and have structures there with sidewalks and gazebos, which we wish to allow them to remain. We don't want to have to come back in and say, you have to remove your improvements on our property. But we didn't know what we were gonna be able to get with tree conservation in that area. So the buffer discussion is really, I hate to say it's irrelevant, but all of that shaded area is gonna stay. That entire tree conservation area is gonna stay, and we just received the tree survey a week and a half ago. So whether it's 15 feet or 50 feet, it's really irrelevant. That entire shaded area is gonna stay. But we did meet on-site with the townhomes and said, we identified this other little corner, which I don't know how to draw on here, but, hmm, that little corner right there, where we all stood around and we looked and we said, you know, when we run this sewer line through here, there may be this window where you have a little clearance, and we agreed and wrote a letter and said, we will plant all through here and try to make this better than it is now. So I think the conditions back there will be an improvement to what they are now. And we just, it was a timing thing, but I'm here in public saying that we'll work with them on that.
Thank you, sir. Does that answer your question? Commissioner Miller, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, quick follow-up. With respect to the trees, Ms. Miller pointed out that there were two oak trees in particular that she's interested in. While this is pulled up, could you identify where those are located?
The existing oak tree, I believe, is right in that area, so to speak. And with the Blue Ridge widening, with the recommended parking limited frontage, that forces the building up. And again, with trying to, you know, balance, you know, the buffering that we have with our adjacent property owners versus those with, across the street, again, just the guidance from both the frontage and those practical realities, you know, that tree won't be able to remain there.
And do you have an idea how many additional trees you'll be planting?
The site itself is fairly wooded today.
Okay.
That's a photo of the site there. And there's the tree in question.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So I don't know if we'll be, I don't think that we'll be planting any.
Right.
At least not for TCA purposes, obviously.
Question for staff regarding designation of Blue Ridge on this section?
What is the designation?
It is the designation.
I'm sorry. It is two-lane divided.
Two-lane divided.
Which is usually implemented as a three-lane cross-section, with the center turn lane is the middle lane.
Okay. So it's a, it's a cross-section that typically supports commercial and office development? It's not generally used in a neighborhood setting?
It is a mixed-use street.
It's a mixed-use street.
Yes, in our code.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions from commissioners?
Here we have a couple of options. We have the option of requesting a time extension. We have the option of voting on the case with the conditions that have been presented to us. Or we could make up a third option if we so choose. What is the will of the commission?
What, make up a third option?
I could make up a third option on the fly, just 'cause I can. So, will of the commission, act upon the conditions that are before us now with the understanding of how the TCA would work and how the side-party agreement would work with understory planting? Or would you like to ask for a time extension for us to be able to address the current deadline, which is August 20?
So generally, I'm in favor of holding things at the table to get the comments, or to get the conditions right, so that there's not confusion in the future. In this case, given the tree conservation area and the dynamics of this site in particular, I think that, for me, that concern is not as important on this case, so I would be comfortable voting it out today.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move a motion to approve case Z6720, and to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated August 10, 2021, containing the agenda materials, and period.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Rains, with a second. I'm getting eyeballs from Mr. York. Nope, no eyeballs, okay.
Sorry.
I'm really good at reading eyes now. Okay. We have a motion on the table from Commissioner Miller, and a second from Commissioner Rains to approve this case, Z6720, with the conditions that currently stand. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? No? With that, that motion passes unanimously.
I will open the floor for Commissioner Lampman with a statement regarding her recusal.
I wanted to recuse myself as the fact that I live in the Edwards Mill Townhome community, and I felt that there was a potential to affect my property value, and as such, I wanted to recuse myself from the case. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lampman. Moving on to the next item under old business, that's E2, case number Z1821 on Boylan Avenue. This is a request to rezone approximately 0.48 acres from office mixed-use three stories detached with North Boylan Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District to office mixed-use seven stories urban limited conditional use with transit overlay district. This item was discussed and deferred at the June 22 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to have additional conversations with the neighbors. I'd like to ask for a brief update from staff focusing on the changes to the application since our last discussion.
Good morning, Planning Commission, Chair Fox, and members of the commission, Matthew Clem, Planning and Development. So this was before you on June 22nd, took full public comment and had discussion at that time. The meeting was deferred. I believe the commission was in contact with some community members who wanted to attend this meeting, and I believe they are here today. There's been no change to the request, no new zoning conditions, and I don't believe there has been any subsequent conversation. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the case. I do believe there is someone from the neighborhood who would like to speak as well.
Thank you. With that, just by show of hands, members in the audience who are here to discuss this case or provide comment? Okay, if you want to come forward, we'll just take public comment on this case at this point. Generally, we've allowed public comment previously, as this is an old-business item, I'd put six minutes on the clock.
Is this your presentation?
No, I have no presentation.
Okay, great.
Thank you, commission members, for, as on, my name is David Ruffin. I'm a resident of 204 Dundas Lane, a half a block from the proposed rezoning. I'm here, as I spoke on June 22nd, to oppose it for aesthetic reasons and the breach of the overlay district. But I'm here specifically as chairman of the North Carolina Historical Commission to appeal to you as peers to some degree, because we frequently have like deliberations on controversial issues, such as for myself Confederate memorials. And I understand your role in this. But I also ask you to consider what we deal with on, while not exactly alike, designation of historic monument, or historic districts and historic buildings is not a casual thing to be dismissed. We do that at the Historical Commission, we spend a lot of tedious staff work, we take it up even to the national level. It would be hard for me to even imagine someone casually asking for a historic district designation to be modified to add one development. It just wouldn't happen. And on that basis, I ask you to consider the integrity of the overlay for the aesthetics that it is. I also would like to argue that the constant claim that these so-called residences have been turned into businesses is not a material issue, because it's the aesthetics of the neighborhood, to me, that is at risk here, not the purpose of the occupants of those particular buildings, which originally were a wonderful family. So that is my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin.
My name is Jared Cuomo. I'm resident with my wife and two dogs at 212 St. Mary Street, which I believe is in the rezoning area. So it's my pleasure to represent residents that I live amongst, and we are against the Z1821 rezoning proposal. The way we see it, the overlay provides a buffer between, in a transition, the aesthetics that David talked about, between Hillsborough Street and all the way down to P Street, that preserves what we call the Oak City persona. You know, we moved from Durham and kind of the outskirts of Durham, you know, with purpose to this area because of its unique look and aesthetic. The city planners were insightful to declare that overlay, that historic overlay some years ago, to ensure balance of the environment and that unique persona, while avoiding a domino effect, because once one high-rise goes in, obviously others will follow. So new developments like the Saint and the townhouses across from Calvin Street have followed zoning at great cost and great results. And you'll see that in some of the photos I took here. Replicating the Devon and Tucker, which are apartment houses that you'll see in some of my photos, which stripped a village look and replaced concrete with 100, replaced 100-year-old oak trees with concrete, that kind of form a nice city canopy, and you'll see what I mean in a second. And oak trees matter, by the way. Home for wildlife, my dogs love the squirrels. Turns out that one acre of forest would absorb, absorbs about two and a half tons of CO2. So I don't know how many acres in that 0.48 are oak trees, but older oak trees absorb more than new-planted trees. So we can look at the science behind that in a second. So what I'd like to do is just take a walk, have you join me for a quick walk with my dogs and I. And I'm starting at the far point of our walk. This is Tucker Street, and this is, I believe, the Tucker, or the Devon, the Devon apartment. So I guess the proposed apartments will look something like that, seven stories. So now I'm gonna approach up Boylan Street, we're gonna start walking towards Hillsborough, and we're gonna pass through the district. So as you can see, as we pass through, there's the Gramacy Apartments, similar look and feel, concrete, oak trees have been removed in favor of newer trees. But as we approach, coming toward Hillsborough up Boylan, we're starting to see a different perspective that we've seen before in some of the aerial shots. Down on the ground, you can start to see this canopy of oak trees that I just described coming towards, as we get to North Street. Again, walking up towards Hillsborough, there's North Street. Again, some of the businesses there are, you know, within the zoning, the four-story zoning. Again, that canopy look as we're walking up towards Lane, and again, there's Lane Street now. Again, we're going up toward West Jones, where the set area is. On the right there, you'll see that's the, that's the property in question. Little closer look. That's West Jones. As we walk towards, you see the Saint over there, one of the townhouses, right, that's the corner. Again, that village look, trees, that's looking over at St. Mary Street, there's the Saint. That is the property that is in question. You'll see on the right a church as we approach it. And when I said a great length, the designers to respect the historic rezoning, notice that the roof, and my colleague, Suell, will probably talk a little bit more about the roof of the church and how it matches the roof line of the Saint. All right, so that's kind of what it looks like from our perspective. We ask that you preserve the integrity that the planners were so thoughtful of when they set that up as a historic district. It attracted us to the area. We would hate to see it change. We love Raleigh the way it is, and it has that worldwide persona. It's a city of oaks, and oaks matter.
Thank you, Mr. Cuomo. I'd ask perhaps, Mr. Clem, before we continue with the public comment, can you provide a little bit of clarification to differentiate between an NCOD and an HOD, basically the nature and the origin of those two distinct overlays?
Yes, you read my mind, Chair Fox. So just want to clarify what the NCOD, the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, is a zoning tool that exists in our code and is mapped in the area. And there is another type of zoning called an HOD, a historic overlay, and that's different than the NCOD. The HOD is different in that it does provide some protections for demolition, there's a waiting time before you can demolish a building within that zoning area.
And additionally, there are architectural standards that have to be met when a new structure is built in the HOD. That's not what the NCOD is. The NCOD is a different type of zoning tool, and what this one does, the North Boylan NCOD, is puts a cap on building height and alters some of the front and side yard setbacks. So nothing about the existing zoning prevents the demolitions of these buildings or has any other type of architectural styling requirements for new construction or changes to an existing structure. What the NCOD does is require that a new building be three stories in height and a certain similar distance from the street as other structures in the area.
Thank you, sir. And then if I'm not mistaken, there's a, is there a tree preservation component of an NCOD versus NHOD?
Yep, thank you. So there are landscaping considerations in the HOD that does not exist in the NCOD.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sir, that's helpful. Because I've completely messed up the order of agenda and just want to check in, make us get back on track. We offered members of the public the opportunity to speak in opposition on the case. I'd like to offer the applicant team or those in support of the case, six minutes to also address the case.
Do you have your presentation?
Sure. Generally, we give a six-minute cap, and I believe we met that cap. It's shared between anyone who's here to speak. If you have comments that are in addition and would provide additional insight other than what others have said, we can allow an additional two minutes for you to speak, if that's helpful, sir. Okay, without opposition, okay, there we go. We're going to allow some additional public comment on this case. Two minutes on the clock. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Once again, my name is Suell Alawar. I'm the developer as well as the architect of the Saint. I will be eventually living in this neighborhood. So I'm not here to oppose. I'm here to really just clarify and to really ask the developers to really reconsider this sort of approach of what we're trying to do here. This, in the late '90s, I was involved in the taking this neighborhood and turning it into a conservation district with Martin Stankis. The neighbors got together. We owned the land, although it hurt us financially to change this conservation, to turn it into conservation list, because we could have done a high-rise prior to that. We did not choose to do so. We decided that it was a better way to do it, that this scale of this neighborhood, the transition from Cameron Park all the way to Glenwood, this was obviously prior to Glenwood being what it is today. What was happening was a lot of these homes were being torn down and very bland one-story office buildings were being put in. Some of these homes were also being torn down, and because they didn't have parking, they were building homes again, and I can show you on the map, that had, that they took these homes and pushed them to the back and put parking in the front of them. So now when you're walking down the street, you're just looking at cars instead of looking at houses and greenery and sort of. So the transition, I had a drone video done earlier this morning, but unfortunately, the ST doesn't work here. It shows you that this neighborhood is very specific. It doesn't include Tucker. It doesn't include that part of the blocks. It's just these four, five blocks where they've taken Boylan Heights. I mean, it is a Boylan Heights overlay district. Imagine that they took something that's across the bridge, carried it over to protect this neighborhood because it was slowly deteriorating. And what's happened by putting in this overlay district is a great amount of funding and money went back into the community by having the Saint, the Clark, there's other townhouse projects that have gone in. So to put up a seven-story building just does not make sense. Now, prior, the pitch roof, it's required to have a pitch roof.
Are you at the end of your comments, sir? I just want to remind you, we're at the end of time. If you just want to finish your statement.
Because I think one of the things that's happened is, once the new UDO kicked in, the height restriction went down. So the Saint was able to be a little bit higher than what is allowed now. So I think there is a compromise with the developers to help, kind of help them get back to that 40-foot height restriction that was taken away from them under the new UDO. So that's really one of my main points that I wanted to bring in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Can we reset for six? Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Fox, members of the Commission. Good to see you in person. Toby Coleman, Smith Anderson, here on behalf of the applicant. It's been a few weeks, and I think y'all have mainly heard what you need to hear from us. I do, I think you guys know this point. I do want to emphasize, not a historic district. It's an NCOD, and the NCOD, as actually I think outlined very well, was really an issue where it was created in 1998. It was created because this was an area of Raleigh that had a lot of pre-World War II architecture. It was World War II urban architecture. And the concern in the late '90s was, in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, as was just said, in fact, I lived in one, there was a lot of old homes that were getting demolished and commercial buildings, some of like you saw in those pictures, were being put up with parking up front. And the concern was is that basically you're getting a suburban development in this area. And so this was pre-Raleigh boom, it's 1998, and so the goal was to preserve a neighborhood of pre-World War II architecture. And there was no frontage requirements. There were no, none of the current UDO standards were there. And so when you actually look at this NCOD, three of the four requirements relate to what we now know as build-to and frontage. It's a build-to. It's public entrance must be facing the street, and parking must be behind the building. We're preserving those three. The only thing that we're not preserving is the height. So the current height is 40 feet. It's not clear that that was actually a driving factor in the NCOD. I've spent a lot of time looking into this, and there's just not a lot of documentation, frankly, about it. But it's not clear at that point that that was a major concern. I do want to address a couple of other things. So number one, this is on the block bounded to the north by Jones, to the east by North Boylan, to the west by St. Mary's, and to the south, I haven't drawn that very well, but to the south by Hillsborough. As you can see, this block actually, number one, this NCOD is very odd. It's small. It encompasses a neighborhood that I've lived on North Boylan Avenue. I never said that I lived in North, on North Boylan. I said I lived on North Boylan Avenue. It's not a cogent neighborhood like you would typically think of as being a neighborhood. And this, there's only a part of the block that's protected, and in fact, this is an eight-story building right here, right adjacent to the property. So that's the Raleigh Housing Authority Building. So this is an instance where, even if you remove this from the NCOD, it's not going to, it's at the southern edge of the NCOD. It's not going to have a negative impact, and it won't create a precedent for future consideration. The folks you've heard from live in the Saint luxury townhomes. They're right here. They will continue to be protected by the NCOD. There's actually been two townhome developments in the NCOD. I believe the other one's right here, thereabouts. That one will also continue to be protected. I did want to go ahead and quickly address one question we got at the last meeting. There was a question about whether this would essentially be building a tall building next to single-family homes, and there was a discussion about what the uses are in this neighborhood. This is just a map. This is actually taken straight from the Wake County GIS records. They have use records in the Wake County GIS. The red means commercial. And as you can see, the entire block where this property is located is surrounded by residential conversions or otherwise commercial buildings. And in fact, except for, this is the Saint right here, most of the area, it has been converted either to multifamily, this is the eight-story, probably Housing Authority along with the Carriage House, has been converted to multifamily. So this is a lot of CASA development, or has been converted into offices. And just as you're aware, this is an area where there has been extensive development. There has been seven, there's seven-story buildings or taller to the south, to the east, and to the north. And so this is consistent with the area. It's consistent with the guidance. And with that, we do have our entire team if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Now I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from Commission members. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Commissioner Miller?
I'm conflicted on this case, not legally, but emotionally. The, I, you know, one of the challenges, I think, with overlay districts in general are being, is being articulated and demonstrated here, which is that they can sort of try to freeze an area in time and not allow it to adapt to the changing circumstances. And in this case, since the original purpose was to protect the sort of streetscape for the existing homes, it then slowly turned into commercial uses, you know, the original purpose of the NCOD somewhat, it appears, may have outlived its intended, its initially intended useful life. And then the challenge is, of course, that because this existed, other people invested in abiding by the NCOD and building specifically trying to meet those new rules. And now the rug might, you know, get pulled out from under them a little bit and changed. And so in general, I think this highlights one of the problems with NCODs generally, but we have to figure out what to do with this specific parcel. And so I've gone back and forth on it personally several times. The, one of the challenges with building is always if not here, where? And that also rings true to me, and this is a downtown area, very close to the High Development District, where we want to have more sort of walkable jobs and amenities and resources for housing. But then on the flip side of that, we also want more transitional neighborhoods between Cameron Park and Glenwood South. So I've been conflicted on some of these pieces and even more so during this meeting today, but I'm curious what some of the other commissioners think on those or other points.
Commissioner O'Hever?
Well, since y'all are both looking at me, I guess I'll go next. I'm also conflicted on this case. I don't know. I guess it's emotional. Don't consider myself much of an emotional guy, but I'll go with it. Is it true that there are sort of four pieces of the NCOD, three of which the applicant is essentially adhering to, and the height not? Is that accurate, Matt?
Yeah, that's a fair representation, yes.
Okay. And then, so we're at a 40-foot height limit for three stories currently, although there have been, previously in the NCOD, there have been buildings that were built taller than the 40 feet, I understood from Mr. Suell, due to the UDO changes. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, I believe you're referencing the built height of the Saint in excess of those 40 feet.
Okay. And where is seven-story height limit right now in the UDO? I know I should know it, but...
I don't know. Ken or Travis, do you?
Double checking, I believe that with the text change from the last...
I don't feel so bad if y'all...
It is. Seven stories, no limitation in feet. We, under the text change from the last couple of years, removed the height and feet for every story category other than three, four, and five.
So no limitations, I would say?
No limitations on the height and feet, just a limitation on the number of stories in seven-story district. So the ultimate height of the building would be based on those floor-to-floor heights between the floors.
I do have some concerns about that. Has the applicant considered any height limitations in feet, not just stories?
That has come up. We have discussed it. We are in the early stages, preliminary stage of design, so we don't necessarily have a set height. This is a case, as I mentioned at the June 22 hearing, where the topography falls from east to west. And so this is a case where the expectation is it will actually look like a six-story building from North Boylan Avenue because of Raleigh rules that, because both West Jones and North Boylan will be primary streets. We don't think we can get sort of an extra story bonus where you could have seven stories on North Boylan. So we expect that any development would max out effectively at six stories from North Boylan. We, you know, we've heard from neighbors about some of these issues, and in particular, I believe we had a neighbor who's right at the corner there at the Saint who expressed concerns about some of this stuff. We did add some zoning conditions related to their concerns to increase the, we added additional parking garage screening requirements and additional mechanical equipment screening requirements, basically because they were concerned that they have some, the Saint has upper-story balconies, sorry. And they were concerned about, you know, having to see a parking garage or screening. So we did include some additional provisions to make sure that those were screened, but we have not, we've not heard any specific requests for height. And so haven't tried to frankly shoot in the dark to try to figure out what that would be. But hope that helps.
Would the applicant be willing to consider providing some additional detail or conditions related to height and feet, both at the, at the front of the building, facing the street versus the back?
We'd certainly be willing to consider it. I guess, I think, you know, I just want to make sure that I understand what we're talking about. Are we talking about, I'd probably have to work with staff through it, it sounds like what you're talking about would either be either a story restriction based, you know, from, from the height of, from North Boylan, you know, number of stories above North Boylan, or some sort of actual foot height restriction. I think we'd be, we'd definitely be open to that. We just would want to understand sort of what the, what the guidance from the Commission is, to the extent that is the guidance.
Thank you. I believe the recommendation would include a height in feet as our story is currently outlined. Another question while I have you up here, Mr. Clem. Can we talk a little bit about the nature of including the transit overlay district on this case? I know that that is currently under consideration in the text change committee. And then, to soapbox for a small moment, I'm, generally, transit overlay district is most impactful when it is on more than one property. And I do not know of cases where, I have not seen, in my experience, a lot of cities allowing applicants to apply the TOD. That's generally a city-initiated rezoning in many places, and it's meant to follow a public investment in transit. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. And if I may, go back to the last point of discussion. Before the UDO was amended, the height and feet for a seven-story building was 90 feet, just to make that point. In terms of the TOD, you're correct that the transit overlay district is currently being modified, and that's under review. And so it's a bit of a moving target on exactly what is included in that, once that's all said and done. In terms of mapping the TOD, there is another case that has been an applicant-initiated mapping of that district, and that was over off Sunnybrook Road, southeast of Wake Med, within good walking distance to the New Burn Avenue BRT corridor. So that was done there. This is another example where we are in, this property is in good location to Union Station for walking and biking. And so those same benefits of the TOD would be felt and experienced here. In terms of what other cities and municipalities have done in mapping these types of tools, I think you're probably right, where it is a larger city-initiated zoning, and that is something I believe that is on the table for Raleigh in the future as well. But at the end of the day, it is a zoning tool that comes with it, benefits that encourage walkability. walkability and transit use, and this seems like a fine location for those benefits as well.
Thank you. Specifically, one of the items contemplated in the TOD is a 50% bonus or height increase related to certain provisions in the project. How would that... How would that play into this particular case if a TOD overlay is approved?
Yep. So, if the height bonus was approved as drafted now, it would... The applicants or the property owners, developers could benefit from that height bonus as well. So, what that would do would increase the permitted building height by 50% if a certain percentage of the additional residential units were set aside as targeted affordable housing units that were rented below the market rate. If conditions were added to the case that, say, for example, a 90-foot building height, that would control over the additional bonus. If there are additional zoning conditions, that would prohibit a taller building to be built.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I don't think that's clear to the majority of the public and maybe to the applicant team themselves, what's being contemplated for the TOD and how that would impact the case in the future. So, I would like to recommend... We have until September 20th for this case. I'd like to recommend... Do we have enough time to have them just come back at our next regular meeting or just a meeting uncertain? I'm looking for a head nod.
And barring any objections from the applicants, staff can certainly be prepared to re-present the case at your next regular meeting.
Okay, excellent. Without objection, I'd like to defer the case. Applicant will discuss with staff any of the recommendations the commission has made regarding height and the implication of using the TOD overlay. Excellent. Seeing none. We can move on. We're shifting now from old business to new business. It is currently 10:42. I'm gonna allow members of the commission... Would you like to take a three-minute break to be human? Okay? Let's please do so. You have four minutes. And members of staff are welcome to decalisenics. There you go. Please go. 10th 2021 Planning Commission meeting. We are currently back at new business. There are five items listed under the new business portion of the agenda today. These requests have not appeared on a previous Planning Commission agenda. We will hear a full staff presentation and applicant presentation. The first item up for discussion, item F.1, case number CP721, which is a city-initiated request to amend transportation-related maps in the comprehensive plan in the vicinity of Common Oaks Drive. I would like to ask for a presentation from Hannah Recau.
Good morning. As the chair mentioned, this is a city-initiated comprehensive plan amendment request. The request would amend two maps in the comprehensive plan, map T1 Street Plan and map T5 interchanges and planned interchanges in grade separation. The overview of the changes, the request would remove a proposed extension of Common Oaks Drive that runs parallel to US-1. It would amend the designation for Common Oaks Drive and Green Elm Lane from a two-lane divided avenue to a two-lane undivided avenue. It would amend the alignment of a crossing of US-1, and then it would amend the location of that grade separation overpass. This is sort of the existing plans. This is the location, North Raleigh. The right part of the screen is Wake Forest jurisdiction. Offscreen to the west is Falls Lake. See, in yellow are the existing proposed extensions, one that crosses US-1 and one that runs parallel. And then, you can see Common Oaks Drive and Green Elm Lane as a two-lane divided. And then, here's the... Oops. Here's the proposed changes down to two-lane undivided, and then the alignment would cross and align with Cavanaugh Shops. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The realignment of the crossing makes it more likely that it will be built as a grade separation crossing that's friendlier to people walking and biking. So, it's consistent with several policies related to that. And that is the end of the staff presentation. The deadline is in August... Or October, rather, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Recau. Are any members of the public here to speak on this item, CP721? Seeing none. I'll open up for questions or comments from commissioners. My first one, Hannah, is how does this particular comp plan amendment relate to the Wakefield area plan?
Sure. So, the Wakefield area plan is ongoing right now. The city area for that, for context, does... Let's see, if you can use the drawing. overlaps roughly there and farther south and west. The recommendations weren't dependent on the existing extensions. There's existing street network there, and I don't see any conflict forthcoming from those.
Thank you, that's helpful. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Go ahead.
And sorry if you said this, but the rationale to go from a two-lane divided to a two-lane undivided, what's the...
I can answer that question, Commissioner O'Haver. The existing parts of the street are built a little bit wider than the standard for a current standard for a two-lane undivided and a fair amount narrower than a divided. And it's in... The frontage is almost entirely developed. So, the likelihood there would be need to be a change to add in a center turn lane or that would allow us to add a center turn lane is pretty low for the existing portion. For the new portion where there's a grade separation, we would never actually build, you know, a center turn lane on a bridge that didn't have an interchange anyway. So, it's really trying to make sure we don't impact private property in the future any more than we would need to. The traffic volume's out here, and the turning movements and everything would be supported by a two-lane avenue anyway. And it's just an opportunity, since we're under the hood, for the crossing to fix something that would be unnecessary. Does that answer your question?
It does. It does. I... Well, yeah, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, seeing no other comment, I would like to entertain a motion. I'll also acknowledge action on this item is not until October ninth, if you feel like you need additional information. Commissioner Miller?
I move to approve comprehensive plan amendment CP seven twenty-one. This case is, well, the amendment is overall consistent with the comprehensive plan, and in particular, policies T five point one and T five point four. And it is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons cited in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner O'Haver? Is there any additional discussion or debate on the merits of the motion? No, seeing none, I will take a vote. So a motion on the table to approve by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner O'Haver. By show of hands, those in support? Any opposed? No, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, that is case number Z nineteen twenty-one on Sumner Boulevard. This is a request to rezone an approximately three point six seven acre portion of a twenty-eight point nine nine acre parcel from industrial mixed-use three-stories Parkway frontage to commercial mixed-use five-stories conditions. This request has not been previously discussed. Like to start off with a staff presentation.
Good morning. JP Mansol presenting case Z nineteen twenty-one. The request is to rezone a three point six seven acre portion of a twenty, roughly twenty-nine acre parcel from IX three PK to CX five CU. And the deadline for action is September twentieth, and the last regular meeting before that deadline is September fourteenth. The zoning in the area is primarily a mix of IX and CX, as you can see, to the west and to the north, with some residential zoning to the south. This is an aerial of the site, so the rezoning site is in yellow with the larger parcel in white. To the north is Triangle Town Center and Pointer Place Shopping Center, so some surrounding commercial. There's some vehicle sales and service uses to the, directly to the west. To the east is some residential uses ranging from apartment building types to detached single-family homes. And then to the south is some institutional and office uses, including the Raleigh Northeast Police Office. Here's a couple of views from the street, so want, the first view is looking east on Oak Forest, directly into the site. And then the second view is along Sumner, so the northern section of the property, just showing that the site is currently vacant and wooded. There's one proposed condition with this rezoning, so it would limit height to four stories and sixty-two feet for all uses besides hotel, motel, or in use. Here's the existing entitlement versus the proposed, so residential density would increase roughly by double, and then office and retail would increase at a slightly smaller rate. So it scores relatively well on the carbon emissions analysis, so a higher walk score and transit score than city average, and it would permit smaller, more energy-efficient uses or units. There are currently two transit routes that serve the site, so Route One runs along Capitol Boulevard and stops at Oak Forest, which is about fourteen hundred feet away, so within walking distance. And then Route twenty-five L runs along Sumner Boulevard and is an east-west connector route that runs every thirty minutes. The request does increase potential housing supply. No subsidized units were included in the request, and it does permit a variety of housing types within walking distance transit. The request, the requested CX district is consistent with the community mixed-use designation on the future land use map. No frontage designation was included in, with the request, so it's inconsistent with the urban form map, which designates the site as a city growth center. Overall, the case is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the future land use map, and again, inconsistent with the urban form map. Here's a list of consistent policies, so again, that consistency with the future land use map, allowing mixed use within walking distance to transit, and then also increasing housing supply, just some of the themes hit there. And the inconsistent policies, again, frontage, so no frontage was included, though it's recommended by the urban form map. And then there is some area-specific guidance that would recommend addressing some of the urban design guidelines in table, or in the urban design chapter, which we're not, there's no conditions that kind of address that, so inconsistent there as well. Again, deadline for action is September twentieth, and there are no outstanding issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mansol. Next, I would like to hear from the applicant.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Isabel Maddox, P O Box nine four six Raleigh two seven six oh two. Here today on behalf of Triangle Center Holdings LLC, the applicant entity. Here with me today is Harrison Ellen Wood of the applicant entity. First, I want to say it's nice to see all of you in person, even though your faces are somewhat obscured. Mr. Mansol did a good job of describing our case. I won't belabor those points, I know you have a heavy agenda this morning. This case, and is my presentation, oh, here we go. Okay, so this case is really just to conform this one parcel, which is about three point six seven acres, into the same zoning as the balance of the parcel. The total parcel is about thirty acres. Our piece for asking for rezoning today is three point six seven. For some reason, when the city did the citywide rezoning, they described the, or zoned the balance of this portion CX five, and our small parcel was IX three. So what this would do for us, it makes it a consistent zoning throughout and allows us to get rid of the condition that requires a non-residential on the ground floor, and also gives us an extra story, four stories rather than three, so that gives you two more floors. I do want to touch on three issues in the staff report that were either called out as being inconsistent or non-compliant in some way. First, the lack of a frontage. This case has, we've been working on this case for, I mean, Harrison could tell you, several years, and we've actually had to go to the Board of Adjustment, and this is a site plan that shows the entire site. Our parcel is really just down here. But there are six different buildings, and we've had to go to the Board of Adjustment to get variances for those buildings, to address, they all have frontages, and we have a difficult time complying with the frontage requirements because of their severe topo on the site, there's a major stream buffer, and trying to fit these buildings in, in a way that makes sense and appropriately satisfies the frontage requirements has been very difficult. So we don't want to have to go back and redo that, so we decided just to leave the frontage off in this case. Next, the Triangle Center area plan. Staff report's an inconsistency with the design guidelines, and that's primarily because we don't apply frontage. But we do think we're generally consistent with that area plan. That land use map calls for mostly residential in this area, which is what we propose. We feel that retail within close walking distance, you have Triangle Town Center Mall, but you also have a ton of other retail opportunities within walking distance. So therefore, we don't think we need to integrate it in this, in these actual buildings, because there's lots of, you know, retail in walking distance. So we have sort of a horizontal mixed-use area there. And we will be enhancing the, both the vehicular and pedestrian infrastructure. We're adding two new roads or road sections. We're extending Oak Forest from approximately there all the way to there, and then also adding a new road, Triangle Ridge Drive that comes like that. So it's a pretty significant public road, which brings with it, you know, the road, but also the sidewalks, so a lot of pedestrian infrastructure. Also, we'll add a pool, playground, clubhouse amenities for the residents, and greenway easement. And then the final point that is called out in the staff, or in what JP just went over, was the lack of subsidized units. In fact, all of the units here will be subsidized. This is a complete LIHTC tax credit development. We've already received Housing Finance approval. And all thirty acres will be in this project. Right now, there's approximately four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty units that we propose. This rezoning will add, you know, I wish it would add the number that JP indicated the density would be increased. It's probably going to add at least sixteen units, we think, maybe, maybe a few more. So, you know, the three issues that were raised, I think they're valid reasons. One, it's not an issue because this is all affordable housing that is proposed here. And two, you know, the lack of a frontage, I think we have a good reason for not having that, and I think we are generally consistent with the area plan. So we feel like this zoning makes perfect sense. It brings this parcel into conformance with the zoning on the balance of the whole project site. We have had two neighborhood meetings. We had, I think, two neighbors that attended the first one. No neighbors attended the second one. The neighbors had a couple of questions, there was no opposition expressed. We do believe we bring many public benefits with this case, and we believe the case is reasonable in the public interest and would request your approval. The primary benefit is significant affordable housing with an easy walking distance of transit, jobs, schools, parks, retail, significant new street and sidewalk infrastructure, greenway easements, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I and my client, Mr. Ellen Wood, are here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Just checking, are there any members of the public who are here to speak on this item, case number Z nineteen twenty-one? Seeing none. I would like to open it up for questions and comments from commissioners. And I might, since you have that site plan up there, just for my own education, when an applicant and developer runs into a situation where they have numerous instances where they have to go to the Board of Adjustment for things like frontage, et cetera, and it's a large parcel, would that type of project have benefited from a plan development?
Well, possibly. I mean, I think the applicant has to look at the length of time and complexity of the plan development rezoning versus their likelihood of prevailing at the Board of Adjustment, but clearly, the ability to custom code the regulations for a specific site plan avoids all regulatory compliance issues going forward, because no matter whether it's setback or frontage or a street cross-section, you can deal with all of those through the plan development process.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions from my fellow commission members? Commissioner O'Haver?
I have a question. Ms. Maddox, what, could you just expand a little bit on what you can and cannot meet on those frontage requirements, what the issues are and what portions you can?
Well, the primary thing is the proximity to the street. You know, and there was really a lot of topo, and unfortunately, our landscape architect is not here. He was trying to shoot, trying to get here by eleven. I haven't seen him. He speaks more eloquently than I, but we had a lot of difficulty in the street, the way the building addressed the street in terms of proximity.
So just the build-to requirement?
Yeah.
But you can meet some of the other frontage requirements, is kind of the point I'm trying to get to, to say, I understand that because of the topo, but there are also these other requirements that you are meeting.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to think of what other requirements there are. There's a signage requirement, I don't think that'll be a problem. There's, you know, we did have some, particularly on this, there's some of these units are senior, the two right here and here are two senior projects, and those, we had some issue, security issues that required us to do a street-facing entrance, you know, differences on our entrances. So that was an issue there. I don't remember all the details about the variances, because we got those, you know, because of COVID, they still are live. We obtained those, I would say, the fall of 2019. Is that about right, Harrison? So it's been a while, but we've been working on this project for a long time, and initially, to really just speak to Chair Fox's question about the PD, initially, there was no rezoning that thought, you know, was considered because they had the zoning, and they weren't going to rezone this parcel. And so a variance was the easiest way to fix that problem. Decided later that it really would help to go ahead and get this one parcel rezoned. So, you know, the sequencing of things might not have been the same had they thought about it from the beginning. But generally speaking, a PD is a much more expensive and extensive rezoning project, so I'm not sure we would have gone that way anyway, just because the complexity of a PD zoning, when really, we have one condition, which is exactly the same condition that's on the balance of the site.
Okay, to follow up on Commissioner O'Haver's question, specific to the site in question that's being rezoned, what are the urban design or area plan guidance components you're not able to meet?
I would let Mr. Mansol speak to that. I mean, from a land use standpoint, I think we're good. As far as design guidelines, I believe it was mostly the frontage. Can you speak to that, JP? Because I don't, I'm not really.
Yeah, the specific area plan guidance basically says that it, that sites should be developed in accordance with, I don't remember the table number, but the urban design guidelines table in the urban design section of the comp plan. And so without a frontage and no other zoning conditions that sort of meet those requirements, it's just not meeting that, the additional kind of guidance for higher, a higher quality of urban design standard.
Thanks, JP. Are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Reins?
The site plan was very helpful, Ms. Maddox. Did you do a study of how to link the road to Town Center and what's the other road?
Yeah, this was, there was a, ideally, there was going to be a public street that came sort of down like this, but we actually went, and that was on the streets map for the comprehensive plan, but we went in and requested a comprehensive plan amendment. This was even further back than, it was at least two years ago, wouldn't you say? Because in this area, there is a major Duke Power transmission line, and they, you know, preclude blasting in that area in close proximity. And so building of that road that had been put with the little dotted lines on the map, what really was going to be difficult. So we were, with staff support, got that changed, and in lieu of that, put this road, which, you know, doesn't, you know, it doesn't dovetail with that one or that one, but that was sort of like, we thought the best we could do, because, you know, we don't, if you did it right down here, you just don't have enough property on the other side to make good use of it.
Thank you.
Can you add to that?
Are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Miller?
Sure. I'll move to approve case Z nineteen, wait, is that the one? Z nineteen twenty-one? Do I have the right one pulled up?
Yeah.
I move to approve case Z nineteen twenty-one and to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated August tenth, 2021, contained in the agenda materials.
Do I have a second? Commissioner, did I see you, or Commissioner Lampman? We have a motion on the table for Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Lampman. Is there any additional conversation or debate on the merit of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? Okay, that motion passed. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, case number Z2321 on Kirkland Road. This is a request to rezone just under 1 and 1/2 acres from Residential 4 with Special Residential Parking Overlay District and Special Highway Overlay District 2 to Industrial Mixed Use 3 Stories with conditions with Special Residential Parking Overlay District and Special Highway Overlay District 2. This request has not been previously discussed. I'd like to begin with a staff presentation from Jason Harden.
Good morning. Jason Harden with Planning and Development. And so you're looking at the zoning map of the area. Currently zoned Residential 4. Request is to go to Industrial Mixed Use 3 Stories with some conditions that limit uses. There are two overlays in the area, Special Highway Overlay District 2 and Special Residential Parking Overlay District. I always feel good when I get through all those acronyms clearly, and they would both remain. So you can see a lot of purple and a lot of yellow. So the purple is the industrial zoning currently. It's pretty divided between those two uses, essentially an industrial park along Kirkland Road, along all the north side and parts of the south side. And there's a transition to residential zoning, although not entirely residential uses, to the south. So this is what that looks like from the aerial. There's the site just off Lake Wheeler Road, a little bit to the south of I-40. You can see the warehouse and industrial uses. Then to the south, that's zoned R4, but two churches are directly south of this property. And then to the west, there are some residential properties, although Future Land Use Map designates those for commercial use in the future. And then self-storage, which is also industrial zoning at the corner of Lake Wheeler and Kirkland. Couple of views from, approaching from different directions. So top left is Kirkland Road, looking east towards the site, so away from Lake Wheeler. Top right is Smith Reno Road, and I'll kind of go back. And so Smith Reno is the road extending to the northeast of the site. So that is, that image is looking south towards the site. And then a couple of views on Kirkland Road, looking west towards the site, and then into the site itself. So I mentioned condition on uses. So it prohibits some of the uses otherwise allowed in the IX category, so utilities. I'm not going to list all of these, but the more impactful ones, vehicle fuel sales, brewery, and vehicle repair. But it does permit other industrial uses, light industrial warehouse, and some similar uses. So in terms of existing versus proposed and what that would permit, that IX district does permit residential uses. So it would potentially increase residential density from six units to 22 units per acre, maximum of 33 compared to 10 right now. And then would permit those commercial uses that are not currently permitted in the R4 zoning. So would allow 44,000 square feet of office, approximately. These are estimates, 25,000 square feet of retail, or 150,000 square feet of industrial. In terms of carbon emissions and housing affordability, so carbon emissions are pretty similar walk score and transit score to the city as a whole. It is close to downtown, so, and to I-40. So a little bit of proximity to other uses and transportation facilities would permit, if it's used for residential, smaller, more inherently energy-efficient units than residential zoning currently permits. Affordability would add to the housing supply, again, if used as residential. Wouldn't include any specifically subsidized units, permit a range of housing types, smaller lots, obviously, and it is within walking distance of transit. So the Future Land Use Map here envisions something of a transition between those industrial areas and the residential areas to the south. And this is in an area designated for office and residential mixed use, so that does envision commercial uses, but not necessarily the light industrial uses that the IX category would permit. So it's not fully consistent with that category. There's no urban form on this area. Consistent with several policies, talks about housing, zoning for housing, more compact development than what the current zoning would permit, and more housing variety, preserving industrial land. That's a policy that talks about preserving opportunities for industrial uses and jobs, particularly in areas that are near major transportation corridors, I-40 being a good example of what's envisioned there. So it would expand the opportunity for industrial uses there. Location of industrial areas, generally areas along the lines of what we've seen here, but not fully consistent. There are some residential, again, Future Land Use Map does envision those uses transitioning to more commercial office uses in the future, but there's some currently residential zoning nearby. So some increased buffering, if the area is to be used as industrial uses, would improve consistency with those policies. But overall, given the consistency with the desire for industrial jobs and more compact development, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and this is the first that the Planning Commission has seen this, deadline would be November 8, and no outstanding issues. And I'm glad to take questions if there are any.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'd like to hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
My name is Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners, 4509 Creedmoor Road, Suite 302, Raleigh 27612. Here on behalf of the rezoning applicant and contract purchaser of 1441 Kirkland Road, Scott Pendell. Just to give you an overview of the rezoning request, this rezoning would be consistent with the light industrial character of Kirkland Road, while also prohibiting a variety of uses to mitigate those impacts to the surrounding properties. The request is made for relocating a business called Under Pressure Irrigation, which is an irrigation and landscaping business that currently rents space on Kirkland Road. And we believe that, you know, by allowing him to operate his land use, continuing to operate on Kirkland Road on property that he owns, is a reasonable request, given the, as I mentioned, the industrial nature of Kirkland Road generally. So again, this is the site here. Everything to the north is primarily industrial uses, with the one self-service storage facility at the corner of Lake Wheeler and Kirkland Road. Again, the site is vacant, mostly forested. As I mentioned, Scott Pendell is the manager of Under Pressure Irrigation LLC. He's operated his business next door at 1321 Kirkland Road. Within that industrial complex, there are four buildings there. He operates in the Triangle Fayetteville and surrounding areas. As his business gained momentum, he wanted to relocate and operate on property that the business owned. And after months of searching, came about this property that was next door. And so it made logical sense from a business perspective to relocate to somewhere as close as this. As Jason mentioned, the site is currently zoned R4. IX is the predominant zoning district along Kirkland Road. Of the 27 lots that access Lake Wheeler Road from Kirkland Road, only five of those are currently zoned for residential use. The Future Land Use Map designates the property as office and residential mixed use, generally applied as a buffer area from residential to non-residential areas. We acknowledge that the request is not consistent with the Future Land Use Map, but we've tried to offer conditions that mitigate that inconsistency. So this is a list of the conditions that we have prohibited, or the uses that we have prohibited, but I wanted to show you in a different light. So these next couple of slides are the principal use table. I've highlighted the OX and the IX districts, and you'll see on other slides, I've highlighted the uses that are permitted in IX but not allowed in OX. And then there will be a red X next to those, which we have since prohibited. So on the first page, mainly residential, no different uses there, and no need to prohibit. Moving more towards commercial uses, again, we have prohibited major utilities. We kept indoor recreation. We prohibited adult establishment, outdoor recreation, golf course, and riding stables. We have prohibited passenger terminal, airfield landing strip, animal care, indoor and outdoor. We have kept the bar use to date, although, again, that's not what we envisioned there. We have prohibited pawn shop and vehicle fuel sales, while retaining the shopping center use as a permitted use. And last page, we have prohibited vehicle sales and rental, detention center, jail, prison, brewery, winery, distillery, cidery, car wash, vehicle repair, minor, major, and commercial vehicles. We have left, again, light manufacturing, self-service storage, wholesale trade warehouse distribution, and light industrial, just to provide that level of flexibility. While I assume that the under-pressure irrigation is a light industrial use, I didn't want to presuppose that and run into an issue down the road. But again, you can see that we've tried to mirror that OX zoning as best as we can. We've conducted two neighborhood meetings, and we have presented to the Southwest Raleigh Community Forum. At all of our meetings, we've gotten support from the neighbors about this case. They think it is very reasonable, given the industrial nature of the road. John Henshaw, who I believe was unable to be here today due to a scheduling conflict, was the old Southwest Raleigh CAC Chair and is now a leader in the Southwest Raleigh Community Forum. He's been a big advocate for this project, both to us and to neighbors. It's been very well received, and we think that with the zoning conditions that we've put in place to mitigate some of those more noxious uses that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in the OX district, you know, we've tried to bring this into consistency as much as possible. And again, because of the compatibility with the surrounding area, the, you know, attempts to mitigate from those more intense IX uses, and the public support that we have received at all of our neighborhood meetings, we think that this case is reasonable and in the public interest, and we ask that Planning Commission recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I'd like to check in, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, I am not seeing any, so I will open up to commissioners for questions or comments. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Reins?
A question for staff. Since they're changing the designation to an IX, and what would be the recommended buffer between that and the R4 to the adjacent sites?
So by code, there would be a 50-foot buffer from the site to the residential uses to the west, to the south, that it's the neighborhood transition. It's a 50-foot space, and there's at least some requirement for plantings along that. Would not apply to the properties, to the church properties to the south, because they're occupied by a civic use. But there would be that buffer in transition to the west. However, in general, that is envisioned for any type of mixed-use project that goes adjacent to a lower-density residential. So given the fact that this would involve more intensive potential uses, light industrial, which fits the category of contractor services and parking, then I think the comprehensive plan generally envisions a little bit more of a transition than just that code transition.
So the minimum would be 50 feet, but you're saying that they would recommend something even wider than that for this transition?
I think that's what the plan envisions, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Miller?
I know the surrounding area, or to the south and west are designated R4. Looking at the aerial maps, those are currently commercial uses, is that right?
To the, I'm sorry, I missed the direction.
To the south and west, even though it's R4, it's still commercial uses at this time?
Let's pull up the map and look together. So to the south, in fact, here, is this the best to illustrate that? So that's right, immediately to the south are churches, and then there are residential uses immediately to the west and to the southwest. I'm not sure if I'm describing the area that you're asking about.
It looks like there's one immediately to the west. I can't quite tell on IMAPs that.
It is.
Commercial use or a single-family home?
It is residential to the west until you get to the self-storage facility at Lake Wheeler.
Follow up on the question to the, from the two commissioners, is the intent to request additional buffering on that west side, adjacent to the residential properties?
I'm wondering during site plan what they will be required to provide next to that residential, the one residential property to the west.
So the requirement would be that there be 50 feet from the property line where no primary building could go. And there's also a planting requirement. There's variable widths that can be chosen, a more denser planting and fence that would be 10 feet wide, or less dense planting that could be 50 feet wide. And there's an intermediate option as well.
Are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Nope. Our deadline for action is November 8, but our last meeting is October 26. We have some time if there's a desire to look at additional conditions. If not, I would entertain a motion. Just want to check the will of the commission. Like to entertain a motion, then? Commissioner Miller?
Sure.
Get a gold star today?
It seems like I'm being a glory hog with all the motions. I move to approve case Z2321 Kirkland Road. This case is reasonable, this case is overall consistent with the comprehensive plan, in particular, oh, that consists, policies. H, this is, is that right? Yeah, H1, I need to scroll to the right page. 1.8 zoning for housing, LU 2.2, compact development, LU 8.1, housing variety, LU 11.1, preserving industrial land, and LU 11.2, location of industrial areas. And this case is further reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons cited in the staff report, and also for the existing buffer requirements for the surrounding R4 zoning districts.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Dattel? We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any additional conversation or debate on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hand, those in support of approving case number Z2321. Any opposed? No, the motion passes unanimously.
Chair Fox, question for staff. On those last two presentations, are those dots next to the policies, the aspirational versus the?
The key policies.
Key policies versus aspirational?
Right.
I love it. Thank you.
I do, too. Yeah, that's a helpful change. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item F.4, case number Z2421 on Dawson Street. This is a request to rezone approximately 0.82 acres. This is a request to rezone approximately 0.82 acres from downtown mixed-use 20-stores shop front to downtown mixed-use 40-stores shop front with conditions. This request has not been previously discussed. I'd like to ask for a staff presentation from Matt Clem.
Thank you, Chair Fox. We'll just jump into the zoning map here. The zoning in the media area is exclusively downtown mixed-use with height ranges from 3 to 40 stories. This is a look at the site, just in the block south of Nash Square. Here's City Hall, we are in this drum-shaped building here. Union Station to the west, down Martin Street, and the future Rust Bus site as well. And again, in that block bound by Dawson, Davie, Martin, and McDowell. A closer look at the site. There's an existing structure there. It's unused currently, but it has been used previously for automotive repair uses. We've got some buildings that have been cleared on the southeast and northwest ends of the block. Otherwise, that block is predominantly a lot of surface parking in the center of the block and some other structures on this side of the block that are within the Depot District, National Registered District. Zoning conditions currently prohibit these uses. Here's a look at the change in entitlement with the increase of building height. We have a higher walk, bike, and transit score in this area compared to the city average. Low transportation costs in this area and a high job proximity index. So, that means additional development here will enhance access to those built realities of transportation in the area and improve on those conditions. Transit in the area, there are three existing routes, 38 and 21. Of course, future BRT is coming. Again, Union Station here and Rust Bus here, so well-served by transit in the surrounding blocks. Adding to the supply, no dedicated subsidized units. There are a variety of housing units in the existing zoning and the proposed. And again, good access to transit. This is the EJ screen demographic indicators that we've included in the staff report with some changes to the analysis that we do. The story here really is that the census tract where the site is very similar demographically to the city as a whole, so not a great variation between the two columns. Consistent with the Central Business District designation on the future land use map. Consistent with the urban form map. It's in the core transit area and in the city's downtown. There are your key policies denoted with orange dots. So, more compact development, healthy communities, capitalizing on that good walk, bike, and transit score, getting people out of their cars, getting around in different ways and benefiting from that transit access as well. Zoning for housing, frontage prohibiting auto-oriented uses and high-density development in downtown. Key policies, also reduction of greenhouse gas reduction. People living and working in an area that has really great walkable, bikeable infrastructure will help to reduce our per capita carbon emissions, which is a goal of the city and a goal of the comprehensive plan. Vertical mixed-use and downtown mixed-use as well. Consistent, again, future land use map, urban form, comprehensive plan overall, no outstanding issues. Your deadline is September 20th. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'd like to hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Back again. Good morning, it might be afternoon now, I'm not sure. Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Worth Mills, 4509 Creedmoor Road, Suite 302, Raleigh 27612. Here on behalf of the property owner in this rezoning application. This is a request for DX 40 shop front at 333 South Dawson Street, just a couple of blocks south of here, as Matt mentioned. We're requesting that DX 40 shop front district to capitalize on the site's proximity to Raleigh Union Station and other local attractions and to allow for a wide range of uses. Neighborhood reaction has generally been supportive and this case furthers many of, furthers many of the comprehensive plan policies. So, again, just an aerial of the site here, it lies at the northeast corner of South Dawson Street and West Davie Street. It's the old Firestone Building, if anybody's familiar with that. Red Hat Amphitheater is just two blocks away there at the bottom of the screen. And then, of course, Nash Square and the Raleigh Municipal Building to the north. And again, Raleigh Union Station over in here. I've got to give Matt Clem credit for this slide. It's a very good slide. Just wanted to show the block as a whole. A lot of redevelopment is taking place in this block. This site here is conducting a neighborhood meeting in the next week or so for a request to rezone to 40 stories there. So, this block should look a lot more modern and a lot more activated over the next few years. This is a slide showing the streetscape along the Firestone Building. Just want to highlight, you know, it's an outdated streetscape, there's no pedestrian activation here. Current zoning of DX 20SH. Almost all of the properties on this slide are zoned with that downtown mixed-use and the heights range from 4 to 40 stories. The future land use map, the sites within the Central Business District, which calls for a high mix of high-intensity office, residential, cultural, entertainment uses, all the uses that you would find in a vibrant downtown with heights up to 40 stories. Given our location within the downtown core, we think that a rezoning to 40 stories here is both reasonable and consistent with the future land use map. The urban form map, we are deep within the downtown district. As I mentioned earlier, our proximity to Raleigh Union Station and the proposed commuter rail makes this site ideal for high-density development. And that shop front frontage, which is recommended by the urban form map, will help to activate this streetscape and kind of revitalize this block. These are the zoning conditions that we have offered to date. We wanted to remove some of the more noxious uses that are otherwise allowed in the DX district. And in sum, this project is consistent with all applicable policies in the 2030 comprehensive plan. We have not heard much from adjacent owners and tenants, but what we have heard has been generally supportive. Promoting higher-density development in this location and capitalizing on those alternate modes of transportation does further a lot of the goals that this city has mapped out moving forward. And for that reason, we think that it is reasonable in the public interest and we ask for a recommendation of approval of this case. Happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Checking in, are there any members of the public in the audience who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. I will open up the floor for questions and comments from commissioners. My first will take advantage of Mr. Clem standing at the microphone right now. Is this an area that the city is considering or contemplating for application of the TOD in the future with the city-initiated rezoning?
The most recent mapping I've seen does not include parcels in this area or in the downtown.
Okay.
That does not mean that it is not an appropriate area to benefit from that zoning tool.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Lattman?
I just have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate here or if it's part of the permitting process, but in terms of parking and coming off of Dawson Street, that's one of our major arteries through the city. I don't know how that maybe has been planned, if there's going to be an entrance to a parking off of Davie Street. Just wanted some clarification there.
Yeah, great question. I'll ask perhaps Jason Myers with Transportation to respond. Thank you.
Sure. NCDOT, the State Department of Transportation, controls driveway access to their streets, which include Dawson and McDowell. And in general, there's not the ability to get a driveway, especially a parking garage, onto Dawson or McDowell, especially to the side street entrance. Based on NCDOT regulations, I think our code directs you to side streets as well, but it's stronger from an NCDOT perspective.
Yeah, if I may, excuse me. The applicant did also just mention there is the existence of a mid-block alley here too. I'm not sure there's a great look at it through the site.
There is a complex of alleys that are shown on iMaps throughout this block. I think that the cleanliness of the title of some of those is a little bit in dispute potentially. And I wouldn't be surprised to see the property owners petition to abandon any that do exist as public rights away. But theoretically, there could be an alley. I don't think the width of it is enough to support a two-way driveway as it is right now. So, there would have to be some sort of improvement to that.
So, that could be potentially something that would enter, cars may enter or exit onto Dawson then? No. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so. Yeah, the alley, if I remember correctly, and I'm partly looking at this, it's here, 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 and here are what appear to be alleys in iMaps. Whether they are all, whether iMaps is accurate is the question, and I can't speak to that.
They show up on Google Maps too.
Often times, old tax maps from parcels that are long ago do not necessarily reference, you know, abandonments that have been processed, you know, decades ago. And we find that sometimes and are surprised.
Are there additional questions? Commissioner O'Haver?
Yes, if I could ask the applicant, he mentioned twice that during the neighborhood meetings, they were generally supportive?
To be honest, it was, you know, just a, I think apathetic might be, you know, not the best word, but just, okay, 40 stories, that's okay. Not, not, it wasn't like, yes, we can't wait for this to be 40 stories or, oh, my gosh, this can never be 40 stories. It was somewhere in the middle.
I guess just, I don't know, maybe we can talk about this offline or I'm not sure what other commissioners' thoughts are. But not to pick on Mr. Mills, but he did mention a couple of the conditions plural offered. And there's like one. And so, I know we've had some discussions about, and even to sort of almost piggyback on kind of your thinking, Chair Fox, about like the TOD and sort of, you know, what kind of benefits can we sort of, I don't want to say attach because that's not a fair word, but there are, there is a lot of development going on in downtown. There's a lot of taller buildings being proposed. There are concerns, there are lots of concerns, we don't need to get into all of them. So, I'm just curious if, as a commission, there might not be some things that we feel like we could enhance the plans or enhance the urban fabric or sort of enhance the future development of downtown versus just a couple of obnoxious uses. And again, nothing against the applicant, it's just something that we've been talking about for a little bit. So, I'll just throw that out there. If y'all just won't ignore it, that's fine. Or if anybody has a comment about, that's also fun.
Yeah, I'd say the majority of my concerns related to urban design are addressed in the shop front frontage, except for perhaps getting a little bit more clarity on parking deck entrance or where the anticipated back-of-house would be for the development. I think that might be helpful and appropriate in this context.
Would that be in the form of a condition prohibiting access off of Dawson? Or like a parking entrance off of Dawson?
Perhaps, I believe that that, based on what Jason was saying, that's already prohibited based on it being an NCDOT facility. Maybe it might be providing more clarity of the intent of development in relation to the neighbors.
So, like screening, screening?
So, what that might look like?
Okay, got it.
Okay. So, am I addressing your original line of questioning, Commissioner Lattman?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments?
I just had one, oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
I'll let you go first.
Oh, I just wanted to see if Mr. O'Haver, if that was the type of design conditions that you were looking for with what you referenced.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to hold this up. I think y'all know historically I'm in favor of this. I guess I have the benefit of being able to just sit up here and throw that out without having an answer to it. So, that's maybe not fair to you or to the applicant. So, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud about sort of what maybe some of the benefits and advantages can be moving forward because this is going to continue and just thinking about the future development of downtown and maybe how we can play a little bit more of an influential role versus some obnoxious uses. And again, I don't mean to say that as a slight to you. I'm just saying that it seems like maybe there's more to it than eliminating some of those. But I'm not here to slow this down. I'm happy to make a motion. I just wanted to throw it out there for consideration as sort of what our role is and where our community is going and some of the factors that we're facing, you know, sort of weekly now, so.
Absolutely.
What categories of things in particular are you thinking of?
Maybe parking screening, like we've seen on some other cases in downtown, kind of a couple of blocks away?
Certainly the screening on parking. I know we've heard some, again, some concerns about height and paying attention to light and air and shadow, which again, is super difficult. And most of the times, I come down on the opposite side of that. But I just think some discussions around that so that it's not just, I mean, we're even talking now about minimizing the number of times conditions can come forward to avoid this of just having a single condition and then having to sort of work through it and really asking the applicant to kind of put their first foot, first foot, best foot forward. So, I mean, I think it is just some of the urban design issues. It is, it is traffic, it is streetscape, it is potential amenity area opportunities. I mean, again, and Travis and Ken know, I have some opinions about what our current amenity area requirements are. And I'm not sure we don't, I'm not sure that the code always requires us to do something meaningful in downtown. There's sort of ways to do things. And so, I'm just saying, is it an opportunity for us to encourage the applicants who are coming into downtown to think just beyond what that single condition is, so.
I'm sensing some nodding from other commission members, okay. And so, question of the applicant. Would the applicant consider additional conditions to address streetscape, parking deck screening, back-of-house, and relationship to adjacent parcels?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I don't want to make the commission's decision. I think if this were to be deferred or tabled, I would ask that it get tabled to September to give us some time to review that. I don't know if we would be able to get you something in a few days' time.
Okay. So, with that, without objection, I'm going to recommend we defer this case to a date uncertain prior to the deadline. Our action deadline is September 20th. And this deferral will allow the applicant time to address conditions and some of the conversation we've had today. Okay?
And I'll just say, Worth has my number, so again, if you want to just talk about it a little bit more, I'd be happy to.
Absolutely. Anytime.
He also has frequent flyer miles today, okay.
Can I ask a question just along these same lines? Because when we talk about it being consistent with kind of like the surrounding area, right now, this area needs innovation. It needs something that is more appealing. So, in that context of conditions, we wouldn't necessarily want it to be consistent with what's currently there, but forward-thinking as to what could be there and appealing to, you know, the migration of the city and that sort of thing.
That's an excellent distinction, thank you. Any additional comment on that case? Okay, if not, that is deferred till a date uncertain. They need some time to cut the conditions. The last item on new business is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 921. As I understand it, Commissioner Reins needs to recuse himself on this item, is that accurate? Great, without objection, Commissioner Reins is recused from item CP 921. CP 921- CP-921 is a citizen-initiated request to amend the street plan map in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan in the vicinity of Blue Ridge Road between Reedy Creek Road and District Drive. I'd like to ask for a staff presentation from John Anagost.
Good morning. Thank you Chair Fox. This is CP-921 for a property on the west side of Blue Ridge Road between Reedy Creek Road and District Drive. This property is proposed to be a future site for the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to assist with the relocation of their employees from Dix Park. So there are two streets that are proposed on the street plan map, map T1 of the comprehensive plan, to pass through this site. And they are both proposed to be removed by this comprehensive plan amendment. Here you can see the map of those two streets. I apologize, this wasn't in your backup materials for today, but you should have a paper copy of that now. And so you can see there's one street that passes through the site from north to south, roughly parallel with Blue Ridge Road. And then a second street that passes west from Blue Ridge Road and then turns south to meet District Drive. So this area is projected for some non-institutional or transition away from public, exclusively public use in the future. And so it does have these future land use designations to reflect that, office and residential mixed use and community mixed use. And then the urban form map supports a more walkable and multimodal-focused development pattern in this area as opposed to the large-scale state property institutional style of urbanization that you see today. Here you can see the surrounding area, and those proposed streets are roughly drawn into this aerial image. But you can see that the North Carolina Museum of Art is on the east side of Blue Ridge Road in this location. And then the interchange of Wade Avenue or I-40 and Blue Ridge Road is to the south. I will note that to the west of this site is the National Guard headquarters, North Carolina National Guard Joint Force Headquarters. Here you can see the site from the street. This portion of the site in the southeast is currently used as a state highway patrol motor pool facility. So I want to discuss a little bit about the policy recommendations from the Blue Ridge District Study that was adopted in 2012. And that proposed that this area should have an increase in a walkable urban form that has a mix of uses and to start to transition away from some of these larger-scale institutional or industrial uses. And so this is from the framework plan from that study. And you can see a quotation there indicating the desire for a little bit of transition in the development pattern. You can also see an identified center where that street emerges from Blue Ridge Road towards the west. And that is one of the proposed streets on the street plan. This is from the sub-district specific recommendations for the Arts and Research Sub-District, which is where this property lies in the Blue Ridge District Study. And again, you can see that, that policy recommendation for increasing the street grid density. And then a longer quotation here, just kind of filling in the, those recommendations. But you can see they're finer grid, human scale, walkable development being the guiding principles. And the plan even included a proposed section drawing. So the reason that those things are important is because removal of these streets from the street plan does weaken the city's ability to require them as part of the development of this property. So inclusion in the street plan does impose a requirement during subdivision or site plan review that those streets be dedicated, in most cases, and built out to the full design standard that's set forth in the city's street design manual, which would be something roughly similar to this. So without those streets in the street plan, there is more ability for the applicant in a development plan to seek relief from those design standards and to seek relief from the connectivity requirement in general. And so in terms of policy analysis, this request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. There are some consistent policies related to encouraging revitalization of the Blue Ridge Corridor and working with institutional partners in the area. Inconsistent policies do have a lot to do with the connectivity and density of the street grid and the quality of the design of the streets in that grid to provide for multimodal options in transportation. And you can see those final two policies coming specifically from the arena Blue Ridge area-specific guidance, which is the adaptation of the Blue Ridge District Study that has been appended to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. So there's no issues outstanding with this case, and I'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, John. Next, I'd like to hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes to speak.
Good morning Chair Fox and members of the commission. I'm Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined today by Will Johnson from the State Department of Administration, Chris Roberts of LS3P, and Andy Padiak of McAdams. We also have representatives from the Museum of Art and the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance who've been in discussion on this matter and in general support and are available for questions. This Comprehensive Plan Amendment is filed in conjunction with our project to relocate the employees from the Department of Health and Human Services from Dorothea Dix over to the site on Blue Ridge Road. And it's filed in conjunction with the administrative site plan for Phase 1 of that project. There's also a rezoning case that's tracking along with it. And out of abundance of caution, we filed this Comprehensive Plan Amendment to remove streets on map T1 in anticipation of comments during the ASR site plan review in case those were deemed inconsistent. This project's history is quite extensive and given late hour, I'll just abbreviate it. It began in 2015 when the state conveyed Dorothea Dix Park to the city of Raleigh. That triggered expiration of leases in 2025 and 2040 for all of the DHHS personnel to be relocated from Dix by 2025 and 2040. The state embarked on a study to find a new site and identified the Blue Ridge site in 2019, received funding from the legislature, began planning and site design, and filed this rezoning site plan review and comprehensive amendment this year in hopes of beginning this project late this fall to relocate all, not only the DHHS employees from Dorothea Dix, but also those in the triangle to consolidate into this one site. In conjunction with that exercise, the state engaged with DHHS and some of its stakeholders to develop some campus guiding principles. And those were to be stewards of the natural landscape and keep forested areas as a key feature of the site, planned for urban future mixed-use development on the southern portion of the site, and set the site up for future development along the Blue Ridge Corridor. This was also would be done with promoting walking, bicycling, and multimodal transportation where available. And that led to the overall development concept you see on the screen, where we preserve the blue line stream and forest in the center of the site to be a sort of an urban park with a DHHS office portion to the north at Reedy Creek and Blue Ridge Road and leaving the southern portion for that future mixed-use development. That is planned to be a future P3 for a future phase. It is not yet funded, but will focus on some of the more mixed-use elements of the campus while the northern part is envisioned to stay primarily office use. That led to breaking out the development into phases. Phase 1 is at the start, at the top of the screen would be a 440,000-square-foot office tower to relocate all of the DHHS employees from Dix Park to that northern part of the campus and supporting parking deck. Phase 2 is shown in the center of the screen, which would be an additional tower and parking deck for the remainder of the Triangle employees to consolidate to this headquarters. And Phase 3 below is that anticipated P3 for a mixed-use development where the state would maintain ownership. And that's important to this Comprehensive Plan Amendment because the state, although is developing this headquarters and mixed-use development, does intend to retain ownership of the site and maintenance of the facilities. So I mentioned there's several processes here. One is the rezoning that will come before you on the 24th. The concurrent site plan review is already underway, and we've been in discussion with Transportation about their feedback as to whether the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is required and necessary. But because of that timeframe I outlined for you, waiting to, at the end of the process or several reviews to determine whether that Comprehensive Plan Amendment was necessary would prevent us from relocating folks on time, and so we filed this concurrently. I've stated to Transportation staff and planning that we're more than happy to modify or even remove it if it's not necessary. But because we believe that at least the analysis is important at this time for our timing, we've moved forward with the request. Because we're going to be before you on the 24th, we're happy to defer actual action to that date, but wanted to go through the overall presentation to explain what it is we're requesting. And that's here. The purple lines you saw on your screen are the internal roads from map T1. And you can see there's a north-south connection and as well as an east-west connection. The lines in solid green are our north-south connections and somewhat of an east-west connection in accordance with Phase 1 of the ASR. So that's going through review right now. And to the extent the city finds that that is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan as a requirement of the ASR, that is what triggers our request for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. We believe we've tried to meet that north-south orientation as best we can and that the future P3 shown in the dotted green lines will have a natural tendency to meet that intersection density as well in order to develop that full mixed-use campus. But again, because that's a future phase, no developer has been selected for that. That process hasn't even been funded or begun. Again, we're trying to prime this area for that future development in conjunction with the Comprehensive Plan policies that support revitalization of the Blue Ridge area and revitalization of state property. As John mentioned, the plan envisions that Blue Ridge Corridor be a vibrant mixed-use urban area with a well-connected street network. And we believe that this project will further that. This is one of the first projects to transform area from state property into a more headquarters-like or mixed-use campus. And we believe this will be the start of more collaboration to that end. All of that led to the site plan, which is shown and rendered on your screen. There were some notes in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And John mentioned that there was concerns over lack of public streets or what that section would look like. The site plan shows that in fact we do intend to meet that two-lane divided facility, albeit with a slightly different configuration so that we avoid interrupting the stream in the center of the property. So we've angled the roads around that stream and location, but meeting just about that same cross-section. We are also providing street trees as well as sidewalks internal to the site to maintain that connectivity, both vehicular and pedestrian. But because of the configuration, sidewalks are only provided on one side of the street, not both. In many other respects, we're meeting the intent of that section. And again, because the property is owned by the state, these are not, these are envisioned to be not publicly dedicated roads, but they would be publicly accessible and they would not be gated. So it meets the intent of having that, that public road on the property. These slides just show the conceptual future build-out. Again, at the top of the screen is kind of the focused office use and DHHS headquarters. Kind of the, the middle of the screen shows that urban park kind of centered around the stream and then the future P3 development. Again, we do envision that to have some sort of east-west connection, although maybe not in the same configuration and the same location, but still providing the same intersection density and facility that that's provided for in the Comprehensive Plan. This shows the Phase 1 build-out just from a slightly different angle, showing how those, and these are the actual kind of massings from the design that's going forward. As you can see on the screen, we are committing to plans for a greenway across the top of Reedy Creek Road as well as a bike lane. And there will be pedestrian and vehicular facilities down Blue Ridge Road. And we're working with the staff to coordinate those with staff projects and city-funded projects so that the site can go forward in a way that facilitates pedestrian and bike movement. This is just a final slide showing the overall rendering of the actual building that's being proposed. And again, this is a view over towards the Museum of Art, towards Blue Ridge Road. The considerations for review for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, just briefly note that this just corrects a challenge of changing conditions. And that is the purchase of the Dix property that requires the relocation of the DHHS folks in response to the state legislature's mandate. It constitutes a substantial benefit to the city as a whole because it relocates those folks and frees up Dix Parks for redevelopment. But it also facilitates the revitalization of the Blue Ridge Corridor and repurposing state property into a higher and better use. As I mentioned, we'll continue to work with Transportation staff and to the extent that's deemed that that's not, the Comprehensive Plan can be modified in scope or eliminated altogether. We're happy to do that. Because of our timing, we needed to bring it forward today. And we're happy to defer actual action when the Planning Commission takes up the zoning case on the 24th, if that's the commission's preference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwedler. By show of hands, are there any members of the public in the audience who wish to speak on this item? And I am seeing none. So I will open it up for questions and comments from commissioners. Do we have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Don'tell.
I have one question about the image that was up there that showed the green dashed roads. Yeah, thank you. I'm kind of curious if you could talk a little bit about the space that's sort of between the east-west dashed road and the solid green road above that in terms of why those are two separate?
This area here?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the, I think the primary facility of that is that the Phase 1, although it involves these buildings and parking garages over here, the scope of it actually wraps around everything you see that's in that faint green area in order to address connectivity north and south. We have hugged the, that inner line of the stream because we envision not only restoring that but making that a kind of an amenity with boardwalks and things like that. And so we want to provide the facility for vehicles to be able to get in and drop off at this plaza right here as this will be, this area there will be the central kind of security hub for folks coming in, either dropping off and getting into the buildings, which will have, you know, state security. We do envision having a separate east-west connection in approximately that location in conjunction with the P3 because we think that's going to be more of like its own city block that's going to be broken up into different areas. That connection showing there is theoretical, but we imagine they might want their own access and means of circulating that's separate from the drop-off to the DHSS campus.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? I have one for staff. Can you clarify for me, John, the relationship of the comp plan amendment to remove roadways as shown and its relationship to meeting block perimeter?
Yeah, the Comprehensive Plan requirement, the street plan requirement, in my understanding, is more rigid in terms of requiring those streets to be dedicated as public streets. The alignment can shift a little bit for engineering or environmental concerns. As Jamie mentioned in her presentation, there is some possibility that the submitted site plan could meet the requirements in terms of alignment. But if the Comprehensive Plan streets are no longer required, then there is some ability for the applicant to seek relief from block perimeter standards through a design adjustment. So my understanding is that that relief would be far less likely if these are on the street plan.
Mr. Myers, go right ahead.
Fortunately, my PC died, so I can't read the ordinance. But I believe that there is at least one exemption to meeting block perimeter that this development, being state-owned, would fall under. And maybe somebody who's looking at the code can cite what that is. But there was a text change about a year and a half ago that created a number of situations where block perimeter either within a site or stubbing to another site is not required. And I believe public facilities is one of those exemptions, and this probably qualifies for that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing to summarize is that they may in fact not need this Comprehensive Plan Amendment? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is a different question. If there was no planned streets, then I do not believe there would be any block perimeter requirement on the state building a state campus. But like I said, I would need to double-check the code reference of that. It looks like David might be looking for it. The question of whether this site plan meets the comp plan to the extent that the city can enforce the state's compliance of the comp plan, I think is where some of that uncertainty still lies.
Okay. So is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the original drawings that showed the dashed lines that are adopted in the comp plan, those were contemplating private development along Blue Ridge Road? Is that a correct statement?
I think that's true, but I'm going to defer to the land use planner that dove into the plan.
I don't think it was specific to that extent. I think there was some expectation that there could continue to be some amount of state office development in this area. state office development in this area. I think there was an expectation that there'd be some amount of transition to private development along Blue Ridge Road, certainly, yes.
So with any state development in the city, when they have a campus situation, the ultimate ownership of a facility running through the site is up to the discretion of the state, whether that's a state-maintained or a city-maintained facility?
That's my understanding, that we would give them heavy difference in that selection, yeah.
Okay, so it's a slightly different animal than if we were dealing with private development and a private developer removing dashed lines on the comp plan. Is that inaccurate?
Yeah, there's a couple layers there. Right, so it could be dedicated as state public right-of-way, in which case it would still be right-of-way. The state government is expressly exempt from subdivision, local subdivision requirements by state law. So if they subdivide this parcel to create development sites, they would not be held to the block perimeter standard or other connectivity standards that would apply in a private subdivision. My understanding of state law is that site plan requirements do apply to state construction, so when a building is coming out of the ground, they do need to follow our rules, which then would include these requirements.
Mr. York, did you have a comment?
No.
Throwing a life preserver.
Well, generally speaking, I'm not in support of removing roadway connections. I do think intersection density is a good performance metric to run by. I think in this particular case, it's another example of what I call false specificity of area plans, where the roadways and roadway connections are contemplated outside of the context of really understanding topography, hydrology, soil conditions, and quite frankly, where parcel lines are or where they may end up being. So I don't generally have an issue with this case, although I acknowledge it might be the will of the commission to move this to our next meeting where we discuss the rezoning case. That's also an option for us. So I'm open to comments from fellow commissioners. Just a high five.
I know we're all getting tired, and I did have a couple of comments. The first being, I understand we've had discussions around these false specificity in these lines, dashed lines in comp plans, and conversations with staff. They say, "Well, they're not really exact, but they are exact, and now that we're going through review, well, this is where the road needs to occur." So I agree with you, and I understand sort of the purple dashed lines not really lending themselves to this development, but I guess I do, just looking at Google Earth and that long driveway that sort of cuts north to south, which I guess that's what y'all are tying into, and knowing what the desires are for the Blue Ridge Corridor and the urbanization and all the small area plans, I'm just struggling a little bit to see these green lines really making those connections. Wherever they might need to go to work with this development would be great, but I don't really see an urban grid there. I sort of see a addressing Blue Ridge Road with the buildings, and then some private drives to access their garages. And if that's what we want, that's fine, but that's not my understanding of where we want Blue Ridge to go in the future. And so I guess just my comment is, I'm totally fine with realigning those purple dashed lines to green solid lines. I guess the question to staff maybe then is, are those solid green lines then what's going into the comp plan to show the future, you know, where the future roads need to be located? And I'm just struggling a little bit with what my understanding for this corridor is, is to make it more urban and connected. I just don't see that on the current plan up there.
Point of clarification, that the application is to remove all of the streets from the comp plan in their entirety. What she's shown, what the applicant's presentation shows is what their submitted site plan looks like. I mean, theoretically, they could withdraw that site plan and put another site plan and would do something very different. I don't think they're going to do that, but the application is to remove all of the streets in this area. If they didn't remove all of the streets and they built something in a slightly different alignment, it's staff's practice to update the map to follow what was actually built so that it follows that more exactly. And you'll see that sometimes where we haven't yet done that. If you look on newer subdivisions on the outside of the city, soon as you'll find a dotted line through somebody's house and there's a street next to it. Well, we just haven't snapped it over yet.
Right. So what's before us is just to remove it, not to revise the comp plan with?
Correct. I think we have the benefit with the concurrent site plan review to know what it actually looks like. So in that sense, I would trust. Is it the intent of the applicant that those are private drives? Can you tell me a little bit about how the function of the campus?
Sure. It is the intent of the state to not dedicate those and to have them be just state-owned and maintained roadways. But they will not be gated, and so I think there's a fear, you know, that the road just to the north is gated because of the state occupant on that site requires security, that this campus requires only for entrance into the buildings, not through the site. So there will be access by, you know, car, bike, what have you, without gates to the roads, but without them being dedicated. And there is some precedent for that. It's in your staff report on other areas in the city that are owned by the state, where the state has elected not to dedicate public streets, and this is one of them.
Okay. And then I had thought, and it might be because we're running on past noon, that you had members in support, members from the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance in support?
We do have a representative from the museum and Corridor Alliance here today. I'm not sure that there's any prepared remarks, given the hour, but I'm happy to allow them to come. I'm not sure that they want to speak with, they're welcome to if they'd like to stand or be recognized.
It's helpful, I guess, if there was support, that would be helpful in terms of knowing if it's meeting the intent of the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance in urbanizing the corridor.
I think here, and I apologize for not mentioning this ahead of time, but I've had other cases, like the broadband case, where I have announced that I don't believe I have a conflict of interest, but I am on a non-voting board member of the Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance, and I head up the housing affordability. So I just wanted to make that disclosure now, just before she steps up, if there's any concern. But again, no value added to me in this conversation.
Yes, we would.
Hi, I'm Lydia Cleveland. I'm here on behalf of the North County Museum of Art at 2010 Blue Ridge Road, and we are in support of the project. It's a campus development, much like ours, and we are in full support of what they have planned.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. It's helpful to just gauge barometer check. So will of the commission, do you want to move forward with this item? I'm going to acknowledge it is 12/28 right now. Would you like to defer this item for further discussion with the associated rezoning request? You like to defer?
Is there, as part of the green line, you know, in a conversation that we had with the applicant, there was a discussion of it being similar drive as to DIX Park. And so is there any, and I don't know the answer to this, if there's any opportunity for a condition to allow that, you know, that there's going to be open to the public, not gated, looking similar to, or any of those things?
Not, we can't condition a comprehensive plan amendment. We can discuss the nature of the drives during the rezoning application.
And that will be a general zoning, which will not have conditions, but the ASR that's in review does not have gates as part of the plan, is not requesting that as part of the plan.
Thank you, that's helpful. Okay, without objection, I'm going to defer this case so we can discuss it in conjunction with the rezoning application at our next meeting. Okay, seeing none. Okay, I believe that concludes all the discussion items on our agenda, doesn't it? Yep. Or do we need approval?
Reporting reports?
Yep.
Approval of the minutes?
Yes, we do need approval of the minutes. You'll see in your backup, the minutes, dated June 22nd, 2021, virtual Planning Commission meeting minutes. I am trusting that everyone had a chance to review the draft minutes, and I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Miller?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Do I have a second? Commissioner Rains? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. By show of hands, those in support, in favor? And any opposed? No, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on. Two, report of the chairperson. The commission has been asked if any member would be interested in serving on the review panel for the Sir Walter Raleigh Awards. There is an email that went out associated with this. Please respond to that email if you are interested in doing so.
I replied that I would be interested, especially since I sat on the appearance commission for six years.
Done, you've been voluntold.
But the other one I did not voluntold. Environmental, something.
Well, we can't, we can't. I did that one.
Okay, good.
Then I'll move on to report of the members, starting with our newest member, Commissioner Dotell.
So yeah, I'll take this opportunity, I guess, to introduce myself. My name is Brian Dotell, and I am an architect here in Raleigh. I've been living in the city for over 20 years, and I've been practicing architecture within Raleigh and the Triangle area for a while, and I don't know, happy to be on the commission. You know, the part of the reason why I became an architect was out of concern for, you know, our built environment and making sure we're kind of doing what we can to improve that. So interested in kind of helping to continue that in this way as well.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, and then we're just going to go down the line. I'm going to ask various subcommittee chairs if they might want to mention when their next meeting is and what the topic is, or if perhaps a meeting might be postponed.
Yes, I'm chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. We just had a discussion at the beginning of this meeting about possibly postponing the next Strategic Planning Committee meeting due to kind of transitions of roles and committee assignments, so.
Excellent. Commissioner Rains, any comments? No?
I have no comment.
All right, Commissioner Miller?
Text change committee, the next meeting is on August 17th at 4:00 PM here, right in the?
It'll be on the third floor.
On the third floor. The agenda has not been published yet, but I think we'll see it shortly.
Excellent.
Are we going to go over the TOD one? I know it hasn't been published yet, but with the housing component to it?
Yes.
That one? Okay, good.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Seventeenth, you said?
Thank you.
I just haven't seen the agenda. Maybe it's been published.
No, 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 I said the date's the 17th, right?
Yes.
Seventeenth. Commissioner Haver, any report?
Yeah, I would, again, like to thank staff for the dots. That was helpful. Seriously, I really, I mean, that's important discussion, and maybe we can catch Brian and Adrian up about the things we talked about in our retreat, so thank you for that. And then I guess I just had a question. It seemed, and there was a lot going on today, but it seemed like we didn't cover the equity and sort of the equity analysis on a lot of these cases. Is it because it just, I don't know, I thought we were going to start talking about those on the cases, and I'm just, I feel like we didn't, but maybe we did, I'm not sure.
I believe they're in the back.
They're in the backup?
In the staff report.
Okay.
It's not implicated on these cases in particular, maybe?
It's just I know that there for a time right before we went on break, that was brought up at every case by staff because it seemed like we were trying to put some importance to that. So I don't know, again, maybe I'm wrong, but.
We'll report back.
Okay.
With some of those notations, too, regarding housing supply, you know, it says that it's consistent because the new zoning is providing housing supply, but that is not the intent of the applicant at all. So I'm wondering if we can, you know, differentiate that because, again, it's kind of misleading to say that it is, you know, compliant with the housing affordability or housing, but that's not the intent of the applicant, sorry to repeat.
That's a great point. All right, is that it? Commissioner Haver?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Commissioner Alder?
Good, thank you. Excellent.
I meant to add one additional comment. I know we've brought up the transit overlay district and asking about that several times whenever we're thinking about height limitations in particular, since that could give a 50% height bump. Maybe a consideration, a question for staff, once, certainly once that passes, is that something that we could start including in staff reports on whether an area is in the TOD? Whether his resign case is located in a TOD?
Yes, that would have to be part of it. It would have to be part of the impact analysis because the height bonus would obviously open the door to a taller building than would be the case of looking at just the headline number on the zoning district. So, yes.
It will be after the text change. Great.
All right, and in Commissioner Bennett's absence, I'll say the next Infrastructure and Mobility Committee meeting is currently scheduled for August 26th at 3:00. I don't believe there's anything on the agenda at this time, but it may be adjusted as we move forward in the month. Okay. And a report of the deputy planning director.
So you have a written report, which I won't go through, of items, other than to mention that there's a number of public hearing items that'll be on the August 17th agenda for the city council next Tuesday. Would like to highlight the last item on the agenda. The city council has given staff direction to move forward with the disposition of some city-owned properties, including the surface parking lot that's adjacent to the city market and our substantial holdings on the block that is immediately east of Moore Square. As part of that, there is a desire to clean up the zoning on these sites prior to issuing an RFP so that all the bidders have a predictable process as to what the entitlement they're bidding on is. That includes, for the properties on Bloodworth Street, on the Moore Square East block, removing some outdated zoning conditions, and for the city market property, increasing the allowable height. That is going through the neighborhood meeting process, likely to land in your agenda sometime in September. So just giving you a heads-up for this coming, I would recommend, if you can go into board docs and read the staff memo for that agenda item, I think it does a good job of laying out the strategy behind this and what the council's goals are, which include affordable housing on the Moore Square East site. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. With that, that concludes this meeting of the Planning Commission. Mr. York?
I was just going to say, I believe what we have on the text change committee is we have a continuation of the discussion of the TOD, and then we're, the two new items is the tree manual update and multimodal height method, a new method for calculating height for commercial and multifamily, mixed-use buildings.
The multiple module.
Oh, the module height, okay.
Right, yeah, on slopes. That text change. It's one of those where the name of it almost needs an explanation.
Gotcha.
If you're not sure.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.